Good evening. I'm going to call the Board of Selectmen meeting for August 7th, 2017, back to order. We started tonight's meeting in executive session where we discussed the town administrator's contract. We did come to an agreement and voted it. Two minor changes to what was proposed. The ... Tonight, we have the pleasure of having the non-residents taxpayers' meetings and have a host of people here to tell you what's important for ... what's important going on in town. So to start the meeting, I'm going to notify you that we'll be video, audio taping, as well as live broadcasting this public meeting. In addition, anyone in the audience that wishes to audio or videotape must notify us now. Hearing no one, please rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
You can move the flag. Look behind you. Sorry. Yes, sir. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't think ...
He had the lieutenant governor, so I thought that would be a better backdrop moving it over there.
No, they need one of them.
I'm going to ask you to give a brief moment of silence for Adrian Johnson, who passed away on Friday with a courageous battle of cancer. She served on the Council on Aging for years. And I know Chris is going to announce it as well, but I also want to announce the resignation, not the resignation, the retirement of Paula Champagne, our health director. She put in 30 years for the town of Harwich. I think we should say happy birthday to Cindy Williams from the Chamber of Commerce as well, since she's spending her birthday at this selectman's meeting.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Cindy.
What a woman.
It's hard to spend time here when you're only 26.
Okay, with that, can we get a ... Can you read the legal notice?
I will, Mr. Chairman. Non-resident taxpayers' meeting, August 7th, 2017. The Harwich Board of Selectmen will hold the annual non-resident taxpayers' meeting on Monday, August 7th, 2017, no earlier than 6:30 PM during the regular meeting in the Don B. Griffin Meeting Room located at 732 Main Street in Harwich. All Harwich resident taxpayers are encouraged to attend this informal meeting, which will provide an overview of town government and provide non-resident taxpayers an opportunity to raise and discuss issues and concerns. The topics we plan to discuss tonight include Fire Station 2 wastewater issues, report from the fire chief, report from the harbor master, report from the recreation director, report from water superintendent, report from DPW director, wastewater lesson or twice. We want to be careful we get that notice. Public Beach 22, overall financial position of the town, and then we'll take questions and answers. And this appeared in the Cape Cod Chronicle, July 27th, and then again on August 3rd.
Thank you. Traditionally, we hold the questions and comments till the end, but as they come up and present tonight, you can ask questions of each one of them individually so that they can return home to their families after they give their reports. Thank you. With that, I'm going to start with the Fire Station 2 report.
Good evening, members of the board, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Clark. My name's David Blank. I'm the deputy fire chief. Chief Clark is on vacation this week, so I'm here to represent the fire department. The Station 2 project has been on the Capitol Plan for several years now, is a priority of the board in their goals and objectives, and with that, a lot of hard work has been put into to get us to the point where we are now. Lieutenant Tilslie's with me. He's going to speak. He's a member of the committee. He's going to speak to the status of the project at this point.
Good evening, and good evening, non-resident taxpayers. A brief update, most of you are up to date, well up to date on the project as it is. We're probably about a year and a half into the project of trying to revamp Station 2. It was built in 1976. It's served its useful purpose. The Harwich ... The town of Harwich and Harwich Fire Department are vastly different today. So we got a group together, I'm sorry?
Where is it?
It's across from CVS on Route 137 in Harwich. So ... So again, built in '76. It's old, it's worn, it's loved, but it's ready for an update. At town Harwich now, we do 4,300 runs a year, and we have, you know, men and women serving together, and the building just wasn't built to meet those needs. So anyway, we did a needs analysis. We had the building reviewed for its soundness, how much of it could be reused, and we found out that really just redoing it would serve our needs. And so we got a group together, rehab committee, took those needs, the needs analysis, got together with an architect, came up with a general design within our intended budget of $4 million, and said, yep, we think we can do that. We think we can meet our needs with the current building, the current lot, and just expand it a bit and meet the needs. And so it's just gone out for RFP. We've got the ... We've got, I think, is it six or seven? Six architects came back that are interested in providing a bid for this business, and we're in the process of evaluating those RFPs. We'll come together and offer one architect the job, and hopefully in May, we'll be coming to the town with a request to rebuild Station 2. So we're happy with the progress. If there's any particular questions about Station 2, I'd be happy to address those now.
Thank you, Scott. Chris, do you have anything, Dan?
Yeah, actually, I appreciate the opportunity. One of the things that we've done, the chief and I, over the time that I've been here, is we've been trying to ramp up the staffing to allow for us to have the necessary staff for that Station 2. So we have been in the process of doing that. We do need some additional folks, but we are trying to ramp up the staffing to be able to get better coverage. And secondly, about two years ago, I think we acquired an additional ambulance, so we do have the ability to also operate the additional ambulance. So we knew that this was coming, so we've tried to lay the foundation to have the staffing and the ambulance so it wouldn't be a shock of putting a building in and then all of a sudden having to get all these additional people to staff it. So that has been a work in motion in the time that, at least over the last three and a half years.
With good timing.
Thank you, Chris. One thing I didn't mention, anyone that wants to speak has to go up to the microphone tonight to ask questions or speak for the people at home. Any questions on Fire Station 2?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Next up is a report from the police chief.
Mr. Chairman, I didn't hear Mr. Ballantyne state my name, so I'm not sure. I should be up here.
You're not on vacation.
I am not, sir.
You were included in the second wastewater issue.
Well, I'm very happy to go second, so thank you to the board and to everyone present. First of all, your police department does not discriminate. Residents, non-residents, visitors, we don't care. Give us a call and we'll respond. That's, I suppose that could be our motto, right? But speaking of things like mottos, we recently revised our mission statement, and the first line of that mission statement reads something like, not something, but exactly like, "The members of the Harwich Police Department believe in making a positive difference in their community, and this is going to be accomplished through active community engagement and community service." And as I stand here before you tonight, I'm truly, truly proud of the men and women of the Harwich Police Department and the service that they provide to this community. So obviously, it's very difficult to try and determine what I should put in a report like this. I think you should always put your best foot forward in what you do best, and I think our officers and the staff of the Harwich Police Department do a fantastic job in community engagement. Just by way of, you know, some simple examples, like we'll use tactics like Bike Patrol. You know, Tommy Clark has been a staple throughout the summer when he's not in the schools as an SRO. He's constantly out on the bike, and that makes those officers, Tommy and the other officers, very approachable. Families out and about on the bike trail, et cetera. Motorcycle unit. Officer Keith Canaly does a fantastic job down ... Sometimes you might see him at the music stroll on Wednesday night, having a little kid sit on the motorcycle and give him a plastic badge, and it looks like he owns the world, you know? So that's fantastic. You know, other methods of community involvement that our offices are into. An awesome example, Detective Sergeant Bobby Brackett, who started up an indoor soccer league for the kids, they're in third to eighth grade, and he's got over 100 kids in the community involved in that. They pay very little, or they don't have to pay at all if they can't afford it, and that's now expanded out onto the beach in the summer months, so ... And the kids have a fantastic time, and that's sponsored by the Harwich Police Department. Other officers like John Larrabee and Tommy Clark, again, involved, deeply involved in coaching in the community. So there's, you know, these officers believe in what they're doing, and I think that is so important for a community to understand and to have officers of that quality doing such good work. And then, of course, there's programming that we put on. Lieutenant Konsonine has done a fantastic job over the past few years since he took it over from Sergeant Jasek doing the community, I'm sorry, the Citizens Police Academy. Some, a program I'm very, very familiar with from my past experience. I'm sorry, for those of you who don't know me, I'm Chief Dave Gilmet, and I've only been here two years. But I've found this police department to be extraordinary, and I just love reciting all the good work that they do in the community besides responding to calls and law enforcement efforts. Again, you know, also like single events, like the Jailhouse Barbecue is always, everybody's invited to that, and it's always a fantastic time. Unfortunately, your police department isn't always involved in happy events, and one of the outstanding issues that we're dealing with constantly now is the opioid crisis, so I thought I would just mention to you very briefly. Our response to that has involved treatment, it's involved enforcement, and it's involved prevention. And, you know, it's an ongoing work. We basically stand where we were last year at this time, which is we had, I think last year, we were at 15 overdoses and one death. This year, right now, we're at 14 overdoses. They just responded to one last Friday, non-fatal, and one death. So we're working very hard with Gosnold. We've got the outreach workers going out there with our officers and trying to get these people who OD and survive into treatment. And the detective division, and I have to give a shout out to Officer Pete Patel, he's our new patrol officer who the community approved two years ago to add an officer specifically for this opiate crisis that we're going through and to work street-level narcotics and intervention, and Pete is doing just that, and he's doing an outstanding job. So, you know, we would, we're also, you know, we definitely support prevention and treatment, and we're involved in the enforcement arm, too. We have an officer at the Cape Cod Drug Task Force who does undercover investigations, and that's, he assists also Cape Y, but Pete Patel operates strictly within the community of Harwich. So I think the model that we have working right now, the only area that I'd like to shore up a little bit would be our prevention and education piece. I'd really like to collaborate more with the schools and really get a big push going on within the schools for increased education. But other than that, I mean, I can't say I'm happy with the numbers, but we are certainly trying everything we can to reduce those numbers, and they have gone down. 2015, we had four fatalities, so the fatalities are down, and I hope that that trend continues. So that's a very quick overview of us dealing with the opioid crisis, and last but not least, I want to mention, obviously, one of the most common probably complaints or calls for service that we get throughout the year, but more so in the summertime because of the increased traffic, is traffic complaints. Speeding, parking, et cetera like that, and I have to, I have to, you know, compliment our traffic unit that's overseen by Sergeant Aaron Goshgarian. Mark Holmes, John Larrabee are on the unit. Not only do they respond to crashes and investigate all serious crashes, fatalities, they also are out there proactively, you know, running the speed trailer on streets where residents have called with problems, and Mark Holmes is seeking grants, gets grants for the community so they, we can do some extra focus patrols and increased enforcement, and I think that has also made a difference. So those are just the three big bullets I wanted to throw out to you tonight. Certainly open to any questions. Just know that you have a tremendous police department staffed with men and women who are committed to the job and truly believe in making a difference in this community, no matter who they're dealing with.
Thank you. Get to go up to the microphone.
Just ask more information about your victims, your opioid victims. Are they mostly young people in town, and is it seasonal? Do you have more events?
The question is, she's asking for more information on the victims. Are they young people in town? Any more information you can give on that?
Right. I saw some figures, I think like the average age, average now, because we've had overdose victims in their 60s. But the average, I believe, runs around between 21 and into 35, mid-30s, right around there. And it is not, it is not seasonal. It is, I would say, you know, a ballpark figure, looking at the numbers across three years, is roughly about two a month right now.
So your outreach programs?
You've got to get up, get up and ask. Ask right into the microphone. There's people watching at home.
Oh, I'm sorry. So your outreach program, you said, was mostly in schools. Can you capture older people?
I would like to increase our programming in the schools. Our outreach programs involves an MOU with Gosnold, who's a treatment center, and they will send outreach workers out to us. If we report an overdose, we'll call Gosnold, and they will send a worker out who will team up with one of our officers and go out to this overdose victim and try and convince them to find treatment and actually help them find treatment. So that's the extent of our outreach. We also, I didn't mention it, but we also deploy Narcan, all police departments pretty much across the Cape do that now, and that can make a big difference.
Great. Thank you, chief. Any other questions for the police chief? Thank you, chief. Next up is a report from the harbor master, John Rendon.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, non-resident taxpayers. John Rendon, harbor master. Your department is made up of four full-time employees, and we augment seasonal staff with about six seasonal staff, and we're responsible for about 200 slips. The marina is 191 slips, and then we have slips over at Allen Harbor, and we have about 600 moorings that we manage in six different mooring fields throughout the Harwich waterways. You know, we're a multi-mission department, spend a lot of time doing mooring management, aids to navigation, making sure the waterways are properly marked and properly dredged. I'll speak to dredging in a little bit. We do enforcement on our waterways, maritime enforcement, and of course, our primary mission is maritime assistance. We average somewhere in the range of 56 cases a year. We had two significant ones so far this year that you may have read about. One, of course, is the ferry grounding off of Hyannis, where we assisted passengers and crew off that vessel. And we also had a real interesting case off Bass River, where we had a young man go out there in the middle of the winter in a 17-foot skiff, capsized and clung on to his boat for about 12 hours until he was recovered, and that was a multi-mission response. And a lot of what we do is multi-mission. We get the assistance of Harwich Fire, Harwich Police, the Coast Guard, and neighboring harbor master departments, and you've probably heard me say this before, it's kind of a regional approach that we take to make sure that we are maintaining an operational readiness posture that is ready to respond in the case of a maritime emergency at any time of the day. So we had an interesting geographic response, oil spill response exercise on the Herring River just about a month ago, sponsored by Mass DEP to practice deploying our oil response equipment that is maintained by the fire department. It was us, the fire department, a lot of different agencies, both state, local, federal, that did this exercise, and it was a good, it was a good drill. We've got a couple of big projects that I'm sure some of you have read about. We have the replacement of Sacquetucket Marina, our municipal marina. We've been going at this for a couple of years now, going through some of the permitting, and we're real close to getting this thing done. The project includes dredging approximately 17,000 cubic yards of material from Sacquetucket Harbor, the replacement and reconfiguration of all the docks within the marina. We're adding 11 additional slips, replacing all the services, which is electrical, plumbing. We're adding wireless internet to the marina, and a big part of it is making sure the marina comes into compliance with the America Disabilities Act and the Massachusetts Architectural Access Board requirements. And that is really, we have passenger vessels, including the ferry, and right now, we don't have a way of properly loading handicap folks, and so we're going to be putting in a ramping system that is compliant so that anybody can access our passenger boats. The project is currently out for bid, and this Thursday, as a matter of fact, August 10th, we'll be opening the bids and see, we're hopeful we get real competitive bids, and our plan is to start construction on October 15th. So that means we have to cut our boarding season a couple of weeks short and move everybody out of the harbor and bring the equipment in, demo the harbor dredge, and then put all the harbor back together in time for Memorial Day of 2018. So it's going to be a busy winter. In addition to that, we're, we have a project for the land side, to renovate the land side part of Sacquetucket Harbor, and that includes the Downey, the old Downey property that the town purchased a couple of years ago. That is part of the project. It includes replacing the harbor master department building that contains offices for both the harbor department and the natural resources, replacement of all the public restrooms and the slip holder restrooms. Included is a boardwalk that essentially goes the entire length of the harbor for public viewing and enjoyment, to enjoy the harbor. A snack shack is part of the plan, and some expanded green space with some artisan shacks. And then on the Downey property, we're going to be putting our harbor maintenance office in the east side of the Downey property. We're going to repave the lot, and the ticket, the passenger boats will run their ticket operation out of there. And really, that's a real important piece of it because right now, we get a lot of the customers that buy tickets for the ferry and one other passenger boats crossing that busy Route 28. So we're trying to get everybody on the harbor side of 28 from a safety perspective. So it's a big project. Also included is a replacement of the septic system, and that project, we open bids next week. It's out for bid, and the bids are coming in, and we, August 16th is a bid opening for that, and we hope to start construction come September 15th, so right around the corner. So two big projects going to be happening this winter, very exciting projects, you know, make Sacquetucket Municipal Marina one of the, one of the best in the country as far as I'm concerned. Dredging, we dredged, we dredged Allen Harbor Channel as we do every year. We had scheduled to take about 8,000 cubic yards out of Sacquetucket Channel. It's needed, but we didn't get it. The dredge had a mechanical problem, ran in some weather, and so we had to reschedule that. We're hoping to get them in the fall to do that. But we took about 11, a little over 11,000 cubic yards of material out of Allen Harbor. We put it on Grayneck Public Beach, Earl Road Public Beach, Wawa Tasi Public Beach, and we put some at the Windermere Bluffs Association, a private beach. So I know there's a big demand for sand out there, especially from some of the private homeowners who have a list as long as my arm of people who want sand, and we try to get it to them as we can, but again, our priority is first the public beaches. So, and then lastly, also approved this latest town meeting, we're going to be replacing the Round Cove Boat Ramp this year. I'd hoped to start the project in the fall, but it looks more like the spring because we have to get a new Chapter 91 license for that, so that's in the works as well. So that's my report. If there's any questions?
Great. Thank you, John.
Sure.
Any questions for the harbor master? Thank you, John. Report from the recreation director, Eric.
Thank you. As usual, we've had a super busy summer. We have a full staff this year, which we're very proud of. Lifeguards, gate guards, everyone. It's kind of rare these days to have a full staff of that. One thing that's helped us out a lot is our in-house lifeguard training. We do it right in-house, which brings people back year after year. This year, we have 31 full-time lifeguards and eight gate guards. We also just had a lifeguard training course that we had 12 people sign up for. So those people, once they complete their class, they'll come through and they'll have a job next year. So it rolls over every year, which has been great for the consistency on the beaches. And the lifeguards that we do have, it's been a, we have some retirees, but it's a very young class of lifeguards coming in, and they're doing a great job. They're very motivated. We've had several emergency situations, and they've been very professional, and they follow their training, and it's really worked out well so far. And we see that going on year to year with our lifeguard training classes, that we're going to be full every year as far as staffing goes. Our lifeguards are also, they're trained on the job, so it's not just they pass a class, they come in, and they're all set to go. We have workouts five days a week, every morning. They come out and they do paddling, they do swimming and running, so we want to make sure that they stay on top of their training for whatever they may encounter. On top of that, one thing we're excited about this summer is a newer thing, is we started last year kayak and paddleboard rentals. We were doing it on the weekends at Cahoon's Beach, and we saw good numbers, and we saw where it could really go somewhere. So this year, we did it every day of the week, and it's been great. We've had well over 100 rentals, and there's been zero overhead costs. We have the kayaks, we have the paddleboards. They see the lifeguards, they sign a release, and they go out for an hour and use the kayaks, and people have loved it so far, so we're looking to even build on that if we can in the future as an additional revenue source. Something else new this year, we installed just recently a lending library at Bank Street Beach. It's a small wooden structure right near the bathrooms, and it's simply just a little box of books, and people can come, and if they come to the beach and they don't have a book to read that day, they can come take one, they could leave one. So far, it's had great reviews. It's just one of those little amenities that helps out patrons on the beaches. As far as our summer programming, we've offered a ton of programs this year, and they've been very well attended. We're looking at over 1,100 registrants this year for youth programs. That includes programs in, I'll read them off real quick, tennis lessons, lacrosse, half-day camp, full-day camp, babysitting class, soccer clinics, pickup basketball, pickup soccer, swimming lessons, youth golf clinic, yoga, shooting stars basketball clinic, youth archery, field trip program, and the middle school teen camp. Two new ones are the middle school teen camp, which is run through the old middle school, the cultural center. We noticed there was a little gap in ages that didn't get programming. Our camp usually goes from six to 12 years old. It's for 13- and 14-year-olds, and it's been full every session. So it's been great for them. They do things like dodgeball, wiffleball, any, anything they could think of. Whatever the kids want to do that day, they do. And the same guy that runs that for us, he also does our field trip program, and he's been doing trips to waterways. He went to the Patriots Training Camp the other day, the ropes course at Heritage, and that's also been very well attended, so we're looking forward to building on those as we go forward. The other thing about our playground camp staff that we're proud of is it's 90% Harwich kids working for us, which has been nice. It's kids that work for us throughout the year, after-school programs, they come back and they want to work for us for the summer, which has been great. And, you know, the kids in town know them. It's worked out really well. So our programs have been going very well. As far as our projects going forward, we're just finishing up Phase 3 of Brooks Park. Finishing touches, the pavilion is going up right now. If you drive by tonight, you'll see poles going up, so the pavilion is going up. The last thing will be the tennis wall, the new practice tennis wall that's been delivered. That's next on the slate for the highway department to put up. We also just, we finished the fencing at White House Field, which was another We also just, we finished the fencing at White House Field, which was another CPC project. That's completely done. And then this fall, we're looking forward to a couple new projects. Phase 4 of Brooks Park, which will include a new restroom facility, as well as expanding the playground, pretty much doubling the size of the playground. We're gonna, at White House Field, we're gonna replace the irrigation system there, which the old one is very antiquated, so it was time for a new one. And lastly, we're gonna replace, we're gonna put in a new fit station around the track at Veterans Field, behind the community center, for people to work out. Little stations, about 20 of them, right around the track there. So we have a lot going on right now, we have a lot going forward, and we're excited about that. I'd be happy to ask, answer any questions.
Great, thank you, Eric.
Thanks.
Any questions for the Recreation Director? Great job, Eric.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Board, how you doing? My name is Dan Pelletier, I'm the Water Superintendent. I'm just gonna start off, and so the Harwich Water Department, again, was one of six water systems in the state that received the 2016 Public Water Supplier Award for medium and large water systems. This is, we've been getting this award for quite some time, and this continued recognition from the state is a result of the hard work that's put in by the Water Commission, as well as all the members of the Water Department team. I came on two years ago, and it's really been something great to be a part of. So if you do frequent these non-resident taxpayer meetings, you know that we've been working for several years now to convert all of our water meters over to radio read meters. Of the 9,946 water accounts that we have, there are only 72 meters left to switch out. So, we've been, we've been banging down doors and hanging cards, trying to get in those houses, so we can get to 100%. The technology in these meters allows our department to read your water consumption without gaining access to your property. It also exponentially decreases the time in which it takes to read all of the meters in town. So the deployment of these meters and technology is, allowed the department to take another step towards quarterly billing. We're currently internally going through a rate evaluation and looking at our rating structure, so that we can try to move to quarterly billing as early as January in 2018. As part of this process, the department will be advertising and holding a public hearing for comments on any and all proposed changes to our water rates. And just a side note, there is a rate hearing on August 23rd as well, in a couple of weeks. And that rate hearing has been advertised in the paper, and I'm announcing it here. That is just simply to adjust the cost that we pay for our meters has gone up, so the cost that we bill a customer will go up that same, that same quantity. So, there'll be a rate hearing on August 23rd for that. For those of you who don't know, now that we're talking about billing, the Water Department also does offer online bill pay. It's free to enroll, and you can receive your water bills electronically, and you can pay them right online. You can go to the department website, and there's a link at the top right to get you enrolled in that. And just as another note, the department, again, this year, for the third year in a row, has not had to raise our water rates. So we're, we're pretty sustainable at this point. Moving forward, the Lothrip Tank Project. We started that last year. I gave a little bit of a spiel last year. We were able to demolish the 180-foot-tall elevated storage tank, and install a new ground-level tank and pump station. While the switch from an elevated tank to a ground-level tank was a cost-driven decision, the demolition certainly improved the skyline in the area. And if you can go over to Bell's Neck Road, you can take a look around, and there's no sore thumb sticking out of the ground anymore. So, that's been an added benefit. I'm happy to say that the tank and pump station have been put online, and they are working great. So, it was a win for all. Right now, just another update, we're in the middle of renewing our Water Management Act permit. The permit runs in 20-year cycles, and really, that's what dictates how much water we're allowed to pump out of the ground. So, we're seeking an increase right now, from our existing permit of 2.16 million gallons a day, up to 2.63 million gallons a day. This pumping volume is calculated, really, it's the overall years pumping divided by the 365 days. This methodology allows the department to meet the high-demand days of the summer, and then that's offset by the low flow in the winter. So, the permit is currently out for public comment in MIPA's Environmental Monitor. And once all the public notice requirements have been met, we're gonna be moving towards the next step. So that is a hot topic. Also, pumping, right now, we are, as everyone probably knows, we had a pretty wet spring. So we're down about 80 million gallons from where we were this time last year. We had our peak day on July 3rd, where we pumped 5.97 million gallons, and our year-to-date is just over 412 million gallons. And although the pumping is down, we asked residents to please participate in our odd-even watering restriction. We also urge everybody, I hope with the rain coming down today, everyone has a rain gauge on the irrigation system, so that we're not watering a wet lawn. The Water Department also houses the town's reverse 911 notification system. This system is not just used by us, but by all, all departments that need to get, alert the public of any potential hazard, whether it's a water main break, or a hurricane, or anything that may come up. So, we like to urge everybody to go over to our website. You can sign up for that electronically through our website. We just wanna ask that you please put a good contact number. If you're a non-resident, and you should be giving us a number that you're gonna be able to answer year-round, just so that you'll be notified if there's any potential hazard that may affect your property. This past fall, we implemented the department's, a new unidirectional flushing, hydrant flushing program. To date, we've flushed about half of the town. We do this work in the early spring and fall, to avoid the peak season. And we're doing this in an effort to try to continue to increase the water quality here in Harwich. Lastly, there's a couple of things I wanna touch on, that are really catered towards our seasonal residents. We have a seasonal turn-on and turn-off service. This is offered to ensure that the water meter and service line don't freeze during the cold winter months. If you'll be away from your property for an extended period of time, we recommend that you, you opt in for this service. Under the seasonal service, a Water Department technician comes out to your property, they remove the water meter and drain the water service line that enters your property, so it can't freeze and burst, and potentially cause damage, and so on. The cost for this service is $50. It's billed twice, so it's $100 for the year. The way that works is you would call two weeks in advance to schedule an appointment with a technician, and they will come out and remove or install your water meter. We also offer the Service Type Protection Plan, which is essentially an insurance plan for your water service. It's $68 a year. And if you don't know, if your water service line goes, it's the responsibility of the homeowner. So for, that repair can cost, you know, in excess of $2,000. So for $68 a year, all costs in the repair would be done by the Water Department, free of charge. So, those are two, two great services, in my opinion, and if any of them interest you, I urge you to please go to our website. We have more details on both those services, water quality reports, water restriction, department news, water restrictions, conservation, leak detection, all that sort of stuff. So it's a wealth of information on the website. So, I urge everybody to go over, take a look, so.
Thank you, Dan. Any questions for the Water Commissioner, I mean, Water Superintendent? Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Next up is the DPW Director.
Good evening, Lynn Cooper, DPW Director. I'm gonna take a lead from the police chief, and start with my closing here, in that the men and women of the Harwich DPW touch about everyone's lives here. They do everything that you could imagine, and then some, from maintaining public facilities, all the public buildings, the parks, cemeteries, the roads, the road maintenance, the beaches, the restrooms, trash. They do an awesome job, and I feel privileged to work with them. I couldn't, I couldn't say enough. They, they really make a difference. In fact, the work over here at Alborough House, you'll see the sprucing up. Town Administrator came and said, "Could you do something over here?" And as soon as there's some time was available, they're really making a difference, and you won't recognize the grounds over there. The DPW comprises of seven different divisions, being highway, disposal, parks, cemetery, vehicle maintenance, facility maintenance, and custodial. Not knowing what I should talk about this evening, I approached the town administrator for some guidance, and he suggested that I talk about the license plate recognition system that we instituted a year ago, National Grid's main replacement plan, which everybody knows about, whether they want to or not, our Lower County Road project, and the West Harwich Route 28 tip project. The license plate recognition at the disposal area, or you may have noticed when you purchased your permits last year, you didn't, we didn't issue a physical sticker. And that was 'cause we instituted a license plate recognition system that reconciles in real time a person's registration with our existing online database. That idea actually came to me a couple of years ago, when I was out visiting different disposal areas, and finding, see if anybody built a better mousetrap and was servicing the public in a better manner. The town of Plymouth used cameras to monitor who was coming into their facility, but was unguarded. They don't take any commercial trash, or any commercial, anything at that facility. And I wondered about it, so I went and met with the DPW Director there. They actually had staff, after the fact, reconcile the images of the plates through OCR software against the permits who people should enter. And they had that person spend a couple hours a day, and actually issue tickets to violators. The thought came, why can't we make this in real time? And to the best of my knowledge, I think Harwich is the first community in the Commonwealth to utilize this system in real-time license plate recognition, and do away with a physical sticker to monitor the waste stream. I used a company called Bonzai Logic, which was the same company I utilized 14 years ago, I had to believe, as a newly-minted DPW Director, to invent the sticker tracker system that I believe now, just all the Cape communities use. We used to sell stickers and had index cards. And when I was promoted to Director, the town manager says, "Take a look at that." And we developed in a short order, an online database. This license plate recognition simply marries the two, with OCR technology incorporated into our online database. I think it's been working wonderfully. Staff feels that it's somewhere in the 98, 99% effective rate, read rate, which is far greater than we could ever do with a person trying to monitor both streams, the residential stream in the scale house, and the commercial stream. We've constantly been making tweaks and improvements to it. I know that Bonzai has sold the town a true to the system, and there's two other communities who my counterparts have called me, asking about it. So it looks like, looks like Harwich was the first penguin off the ice floe, so to speak, yet again. And I feel our goal has been meant in that the primary issue was to make things more convenient for the users of the facility. That is, you don't have a sticker to put on your car, you get through faster, and it allowed for the total purchase of online without the need of requiring a physical sticker. And I believe the treasurer has really pushed the online, and it works pretty good. National Grid's main replacement plan. They have 18 and a half miles of gas main, of 12-inch gas main to install. Nine and a half miles of that resides in Harwich. Lucky us. They started the project last spring on Route 39 with a subcontractor called AGI. I gotta leave these on or off? Probably on. Yeah, it's getting old, I guess. The segment that they did last spring was from the roundabout to Church Street. They've got about 2,000, 2,000 linear feet left, and we shut them down in the middle of June, because of a summer moratorium we put on, and Route 39 being a main artery. They plan to start up in September 15th, I believe, to finish that. Anticipated eight weeks to go. RH White Construction has been awarded the contract for the remaining work in Harwich. They anticipate starting work on Depot Road in South Harwich in the next week or two. After September 15th, they plan on starting at the intersection of Depot Road on Main Street in North Harwich, and continuing to the Brewster Town Line, and then, actually, keeping on going sloughing to Brewster. After that, the main, the remaining work is five miles of Queen Anne Road, which is gonna be challenging, to say the least. They do have, they do have less than a mile to come down Great Western Road, to turn north onto Depot, and then east onto Main Street, connecting up to Queen Anne Road. National Grid anticipates removing the moratorium that's prohibited any new gas services for probably two years now, spring of 2019. We've required National Grid to do a weekly patching job of the trench, and then, before they get too far ahead, do a ride-quality patch. We will be getting a curb-to-curb overlay when everything is done. However, we wanted the ride-quality patch, as is on 39 currently, and that's what we anticipate emulating, because we won't be doing the curb-to-curb for a couple of years. We need to give National Grid customers an opportunity to get gas services, before we go have a brandy new road and slap a five-year moratorium on cutting the road open. So we need to allow that to take place. National Grid has expressed that they will give priority to those customers that are on this, on this main replacement route. So, they're gonna be proactive about it, and hopefully get that done in a timely fashion. It's gonna be a rough couple of years, but when all's said and done, they're gonna be paving all the roads that they've dug up in Harwich. The Lower County Road project, I think I was here two weeks ago and gave the board a presentation on that road. Briefly, that road's in deplorable condition. It's, it's literally, the surface is falling apart. We have a continuous non-compliant, non-ADA compliant sidewalk. We have many drainage issues, if anyone lives down there, even in a light rain. We have been throwing good money at patching and drainage along that road, but this project is sorely needed. It's a 2.2-mile stretch. It is a rather main thoroughfare, gets a lot of traffic, a lot of pedestrian traffic. This road is eligible for what's called the TIP program, Transportation Improvement Program, that is funded by state and federal funds. However, those funds come with stipulations of building sidewalks and bike lanes on both sides, which exceeds the 40-foot right-of-way that the town currently has on that road, and would require property takings to build the footprint that the state would require. We have either, or I have requested, and it is on the capital plan, a debt, a capital exclusion in FY 19, to fund this project. The number is floating around right now. It's somewhere probably between $4 million and $5 million project. If approved at town meeting and the ballot box, we anticipate construction beginning the fall of FY, the fall of 2018. So basically, a little over a year from now, we hope to begin construction, if all the stars align. Lastly, is a West Harwich TIP project. The town's pursuing a transportation improvement project on Route 28 from the Dennis Town Line to Herring River Bridge. TIP is a program which is administered by Mass DOT, federally and state-funded, where the town is obligated to design roadway sections to Mass DOT standards, and then the state handles everything else, from the bidding of the project, the construction, oversight, everything else is handled by the state. It's an excellent program to level, to leverage limited local funds. The town has used this program successfully for the signalization of the 124 Queen Anne Road intersection, as well as the 137 corridor project, which saved the town $6 or $7 million. This project is a joint application with the town of Dennis, and would address the very antiquated traffic signal that is below an F-rating, in my opinion. Anybody sits out there in the summer knows that it does not function as it should. The project would address those signals. It would also create a bicycle and pedestrian connectivity along Route 28 from the Dennis Town Line to the Herring River Bridge. It has been approved by Mass DOT, and the local MPO has a construction estimate of $5.6 million on it, and is slated for 2022. million dollars on it and is slated for 2022. VHB is here this evening to give an in-depth presentation to the board. They have a PowerPoint ready to go to talk about the project, and I hope you support it. With that, I'd just like to say it's a privilege to work with the men and women of the Howard DPW, not to reiterate myself, but they do a fabulous job and they make me look good, which isn't easy.
Thank you, Link. You want to have any questions for the DPW director?
Hi, my name is Dan Twork. I'm a resident of West Howard, and I'd just like to commend the director for the very seamless and effective implementation of that license registration program. I love it, and it affects so many citizens in the town. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Update on wastewater issues, Pleasant Bay and Cold Brook. Chris Clark.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's nice to have the opportunity to speak to the non-residents. I think, as you heard earlier, it's, you know, I represent everyone in the community, and I try to do my best for every house that's in the community. And I think that's important that we all say that. There's a lot of material, so what I'd like to do is, I'm just going to do a simple overview, and I just want to make sure that if you raise your hand, if you haven't seen any of this literature, please, and we have my assistant, Charlene, will pass it out. Basically, it's a two-hundred-million-dollar project the town's engaged in over a forty-year time span, and there's eight phases. The town has basically finished Phase One of the, the project, and we are working towards completion of Phase Two. And actually, there's a 12-page handout, which gives you kind of the overview of the project over that forty-year time horizon. So I'm not going to get into those details, but you can certainly read that. But there's a simpler four-page that we'll hand out, or two pages that has printed on both sides. And that's what I wanted to kind of address this evening, just to kind of let you know the status of where we're going. So the money that was appropriated at town meeting, this past town meeting, and then went to the ballot box and was approved at the ballot box, consists of basically two, two projects. The first is to do the, what's known as the Pleasant Bay South Sewer System. So this is the design of the system, and what the concept is here is we're trying to attempt regionalization. And we have also signed an intermunicipal agreement with the town of Chatham. So if you think about a sewer treatment plant, that the plant itself operates where it has a facility that processes the material, and then it has pipes that feed the material into it. So at this stage, we don't have to build our own plant in East Howard, which I think personally is a real good outcome for the town, probably a savings of between five and seven million dollars to boot. But having the agreement, the IMA, intermunicipal agreement with Chatham, to utilize their facility is where we realize those cost savings. The, the next part of that project is that we have to design out the sewer system. So we have engaged, CDM is the company that we've engaged, and they are currently in the process of doing survey work. So they are going to individual homes that are on the maps that you have in some of this material. And we do have a lot of this material online, so if you want to really zero in and see if your property is in the area that we're contemplating, please, you know, go online and see that. I would caution that some of these maps are preliminary, so as they go out and they're doing the survey work, they are going to change. If we have an opportunity to pick up a neighborhood that would be on gravity, then we're going to do that. If there's an opportunity to avoid having to have grinder pumps and more detailed materials and more expensive materials, quite honestly, to operate, we're going to try to avoid that. So that actually, that effort's just over two million dollars and is underway now. We do hope to have the design by the end of this calendar year and be ready to go for a town meeting article to do the construction. And you can see on, on the material that I passed out, it does have the, the construction elements of what will be addressed. The other component to this is the, the Cold Brook system. And Cold Brook, what the town has engaged in in this project, it's called the CWMP, Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan, is to look at doing sewer work, where we need to do sewer work, where there's larger concentrations of homes. But there is opportunity where the concentration of homes is not as great, that we can then employ the natural elements of the environment to work to our advantage. We did that as part of Phase One, a six-million-dollar project that's complete at Muddy Creek. And what that does is it allows tidal flushing to have some value to getting rid of the nitrogen and phosphorus that, that people generate. So this phase, Phase Two, we have in here the system of Cold Brook. Cold Brook is right off of Bank Street. It's a former cranberry bog. And what the science is telling us is that when you have a cranberry bog, it is very inefficient at removing nitrogen and phosphorus. If you break that cranberry bog up and change it into a marshland and into a pond system, you actually get much better nitrogen remediation. Nitrogen is actually eaten up in those, in those systems, ecosystems. So we don't actually own that land, so it is a little bit of a project where we have established a partnership with Howard Conservation Trust, and I think it's been a good partnership. And I think the way things will kind of unfold, they want to bring the cranberry bogs back for natural purposes, so they can enhance the environment from a conservation standpoint. And we want to have them do the same, but pick some of the features that will help with the nitrogen issue. So we're in the process of establishing those plans and laying out, here's the issue, and here's an approach to take to address that issue. We have appropriated two million dollars. That was asked of the townspeople and asked of all the taxpayers. Some of that will go for design. The vast majority of it will go to construction of the wetlands, the replication and construction of the, the wetlands. Just probably a few items that note, I noticed a few hands went up with people that had not seen some of this material, so I just want to highlight. Overall, we have studied the, the cost of the project. We anticipate that over a forty-year program, it's about four hundred dollars for increase in taxes. I know one of the first things that, we had a meeting, and I think people were thinking it was going to be four thousand or five thousand dollars added to the taxes. It's not, not as significant. One of the, one of the abilities to do that is by having a forty-year time span in which to do the project in over eight phases. You're now talking about looking at this project over a seventy-year time span. We can, we can borrow money for up to thirty years. So forty years for the construction and then thirty years for the debt service. And what we've done is we try to stagger that debt service over the life of the project, so we try to take peaks and valleys as much as we can out of it. So we have been successful in, in doing that. Initial phases will be less expensive. Once we get to the greater phases, it will be more expensive. The other thing that the, the plan had contemplated, the, the cost savings of signing up with Chatham, so that two hundred and, I think it's actually two-twenty is the, is the number that was in the plan, so two-hundred-and-twenty million, the plan did not, did not contemplate reaching agreement and doing a partnership with our neighbors to the west of Dennis and Yarmouth. So by partnering with them, we anticipate not only saving money on the capital cost and potentially not having another plant, so we could have a sewer system in the town of Howard without having to locate a sewer treatment plant, which would be a real value to the community in a lot of ways. One way, obviously, significantly, by sharing that cost with others, we decrease that. So that, that would be one piece. The second piece is that by sharing it, we also have the ongoing capital costs gets diminished. When you have your own plant, these plants are multimillion-dollar plants, they have staffing requirements, twenty-four-hour-day coverage, and they tend to be very, very expensive to operate. So by having us partner up, we have the opportunity to, to realize some savings. So we are working on those. We will also look at seeing if there's ways that we can fund this through low-interest loans to do some of these projects to diminish some of the, the cost as well. So there is a, a lot going on. I guess the, the good news is that we are well underway. What's the significance about being well underway? The Cape Cod Commission held a One Cape Summit, and what has generated all this is the Conservation Law Foundation has submitted a lawsuit that says that Cape Cod needs to clean up the environment, needs to. And that the federal EPA, and it's under the jurisdiction of a federal judge, they said, well, you need to come up with a realistic plan, you need to implement it, and you need to start working towards it. So, you know, I'm happy to report tonight, due to the hard work, really, of the Board of Selectmen, that we have made that progress. And, and when the Conservation Law Foundation comes and says, well, who hasn't done their work, we won't be, we won't be on that list, which we don't want to be on their list and sued individually. That's not something that we want to accomplish. So that's, I don't know how well, that was probably about five or 10 minutes, and that was a pretty comprehensive issue. I would really encourage you to take the time to, to look through, and, and certainly, if you have questions, not just tonight, but please call the, the office. And I have spoken individually with people specifically about some of the survey work that's being done and what we're attempting to accomplish with that survey work.
Thank you, Chris. Any questions on the wastewater topic? Next up, we're going to have Chris back for a overview on what we've done for work on Beach Twenty-Two. This has been a topic that was brought up last year, and we, we did promise last year to do a little bit of work on this, and we have done that work, and this is an update. Chris?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to provide that update, Public Beach Twenty-Two, as John Rendon, the harbor master, had mentioned, sand and erosion and accretion are significant issues. Accretion is the building up of sand, erosion is the, the taking away of sand. I learned that word when I came down here three and a half years ago. I can't say I ever knew what accretion was. In terms of here, what we have, specifically in regards to Public Beach Twenty-Two, is administratively, myself and the harbor master have to have some element for when we deploy sand, when he dredges out these harbors, where, where does the sand go? So I have recommended, based upon kind of the past practice of the town and his, in his practice, of having a hierarchy of what are the beaches that we're going to try to make sure that we protect. We are a tourist community, and we do need to do a good job of protecting the beaches. But as John had indicated, Mr. Rendon had indicated, there's only so much sand, and there's only so much that can go around. So what the recommendation is to the Selectmen administratively, what we have been engaged in, and I say when it's administrative, it's subject to appeal, and certainly people can bring it to the Board of Selectmen, but I think this approach is reasonable, that in some areas in the community where we tend to have the, the larger jetty systems, the, the sand seems to accrete, and we build those beaches fairly effectively. So there's no need to pump sand on the beaches that are already having nature build those for us. So then the question is, well, what priorities should we give to other beaches in terms of that are publicly owned beaches, that the town has control and we have active, active beaches at? So I've recommended that we do a priority system of two kinds of beaches as the highest priority. One would be beaches that we have public parking already at, so people can go and park their vehicle and be able to enjoy the beach. And then second, we have beaches like Grayneck. Grayneck is a small beach. It was a beach that, due to some construction issues that were, that were done on it, it tends to erode out a little bit faster than it normally should. There was a, I don't know if it was a line that was generated, N-Star Electric Line that came out of that location and went over to Nantucket, if I remember right. So that, that created some natural issues for that beach, and that tends to erode a little bit quicker. So we do repopulate that or re-nourish that beach on a more consistent basis. The beaches that are kind of a secondary issue or a lower level are beaches in which they would be neighborhood beaches. Public Beach Twenty-Two certainly falls into this category. There is no dedicated parking for this beach. The only access is really through an easement over private property. So it's a private property owner, and there's an easement that allows the, the town to be able to access. On the backside of that easement, there is some public beach, there is owned, property that's owned by the town. As I've found out, I've gotten a pretty good education since I've been here on beach-related issues, that when the beach is underwater, it no longer is considered to be a beach. So we have, we have a sense that in this area, for the majority of time, Public Beach Twenty-Two is underwater. So therefore, it's not really a public beach. So it's a, it's a public beach, really only a name. So in that area, it doesn't really make a heck of a lot of sense for the town to go in and pump sand into an area where the natural erosion is, is fairly consistent. So I did have some maps, and, and we do have the maps for the, for the presentation, or I'll make sure we have those in the presentation. We, the Coastal Zone Management State Agency comes out and studies the, the accretion issue and erosion issue, and they actually have taken pictures, I think, starting in like nineteen twenties, if I remember right, nineteen twenty or nineteen thirties. It goes back quite a ways, about, about every ten years. And you can see that some beaches have a consistent erosion and some beach has a consistent accretion. This one, actually, Public Beach Twenty-Two, is in the middle. Some years, they have good years, some years they have bad years, and it really hasn't moved too much recently. But in terms of this, where it is a beach that's a little bit of a, if a, an issue in terms of interpretation, because the beach is, as I've indicated, underwater for a good portion of time, it's really not a, a public beach. And one of the things that we will do is where there is town property, there is a boundary marker, a concrete boundary marker that indicates the property line. So we certainly, private property is exactly that. Private property, we don't have the right to go on. The town is limited to what we're able to do on private property. So we will put up a bound to let people know where those private properties are and where the public property begins. So that way, as people go to that beach, hopefully, they will be respectful of the private property. We encourage people to be respectful of private property and just use the public property portion that may be still open during low-water events only, low tide events. So just to give a little bit of an overview, and I do want to say, and I've said this before, you know, it's always unfortunate, we do have an issue with the, the neighborhood in which we have people at odds with each other. You know, I, I think if people could just really, you know, be respectful of each other, and certainly I've been asked to try to get a, a good legal interpretation. I think what the advice I'm recommending tonight is consistent with what the, the legal advice has been, that if it's not a private beach, then please respect the private beach, private beach property owner's rights. If it is a public beach, then you're more than welcome to do and go on that, and we will try to, you know, our best to maintain those beaches. And then lastly, as the harbor master had indicated, when we do sell sand, we do try to sell to the private parties. There are other people that have issues. One of the things that the town is, is trying to engage in is to have the pumping rights to be able to put sand on beaches in large sections in the community. That actually, I think, is a real benefit to private property owners, because if we have the, I think it's a Chapter Ninety-One license that we obtain, we give the right for us to be able to pump sand on the people who want it. So that, that ability to get that permit and that approval is a, is a costly endeavor, and for the town to engage in that and be able to pump it for our own public beaches, and then to make that as a side benefit available to private residents that want to expand their beach and can legally expand their beach. We can only put sand in areas in which the, the beach exists above high tide. We cannot put sand in areas where the, it goes to low tide. So we can't fill in where the water, we know is going to take it away imminently. So I think that's a, a pretty good review of Public Beach Twenty-Two and where we stand with that, Mr. Chairman, but happy to take any questions.
Great. Thank you for the overview, Chris. State your name for the record.
Rick Moriarty. Can you tell us where Public Beach Twenty-Two is?
Shore, Shore Road.
Shore, Shore Road. I'm so sorry, yes, Shore Road. I haven't been a local, so I've only been here three and a half years, so I just assume I'm the only one that doesn't know where things are.
Mr. Clark? I'm Ron Agel, and we've met.
We have.
You talked about putting some kind of a marker at this public beach, a non-public beach?
In, in that location of Public Beach Twenty-Two off of Shore Road, we are looking at putting a monument, it's a, just a concrete bound that indicates where the private property is versus where the public property is.
And that would be in the water?
It would be underwater at certain times, yes.
And if someone, so the town's going to put that in, and if someone were injured by the, by running into this cement that's underwater or a boat or something, who would be liable?
The liability, quite honestly, would be probably twofold. The first liability would be, under state law, we have what's called a recreational statute. Because people are using a public beach and you're using it for recreational purposes, there is immunity that the town has, and this not just, Howard is any city in town. So people- So people, the, the, obviously, the town of Harwich would be liable for a portion. We do have pretty good defense that the statutes of the Commonwealth of Mass allow for some discretion on the governmental part for people that use property for recreational purposes. There is a possibility, as there's any possibility, that if someone gets hurt and they say they, they tripped on the side of the marker that's on private property, then they could sue private property owners too. So that's a, that's something that, that we would run the risk of. But, you know, just in terms of, I don't wanna make this cryptic, almost every property, not every property, but in every area of a town, you have these concrete bounds. So it's very traditional to have these, they're survey, basically, not survey stakes, they're more in-depth than survey stakes, but there's survey points that exist. So this isn't anything that we would do that's different than what we have throughout the community already.
Yeah, but it is a hazard that you're putting in the water and you think that this will help people know what is, where they can go and where they can't go? Is that the idea?
Chris, if I may?
Sure.
Go ahead, Mr. I think you need to trust that we'll do the right thing as far as a bound goes. We're not gonna put something in that somebody could be running through the water and they're gonna trip over.
That's what it sounds like.
Certainly will, certainly it will be something that will be raised above the water, if, you know, if we get to that point. This really is to curb neighborhood tensions. There's property owners here that, that own a certain amount of that beach. And then there's a neighborhood, and, and not the entire neighborhood, but there's people in that neighborhood not allowing them to enjoy their own beach and enjoy their own privacy. So this will be a delineation so that people understand what is public beach and what is not public beach, what is private beach and what is not private beach.
So some part of this is public beach?
Well, what we said earlier, if you were listening, was it's underwater.
It's underwater, so I understood from Mr. Clark that there is no public beach because it's all underwater.
Well, it's not all underwater at low tide. So mid-tide, high tide, it is definitely underwater. Low tide, there'd be an argument that somebody could make that there's some beach at low tide, between low tide and Nantucket Sound. And we wanna, as a town, make it clear that these property owners have the right to enjoy their properties and their beach and make it clear to the other people that are setting up on their beach, not allowing them to, that there is a private property issue here. We also have gotten to the, to the point where we have law enforcement being called out because people are trespassing. They need to be able to know what is private property and what is not when they go down there and be able to enforce that law.
And it's not delineated at this point in time?
No, it's not.
And because you put?
Well, it is, but there's no bound there. We know where the, we know where it is because the property has now been surveyed. So we do know where it is, but there is no bound.
Aren't there fences up that, that do this?
The only fence that's there right now is to protect the coastal dune, but there is no fence separating the beach from Nantucket Sound.
In the water, you mean?
Right.
And the problem with the trespassing is in the water, it's not on the beach?
No, the problem is people trespassing on their beach.
But the stuff that you're gonna put in won't be on the beach, it'll be in the water?
My suggestion to end this is you see the town administrator during the week and he'll give you a better sense of what we're talking about putting in there for a mark. We still have got to speak to the private property owners, but I would, I would refer your questions during the week to the town administrator. I believe we've answered everything we can answer tonight.
All right, thank you for your time.
Any other questions? Thank you. Thank you, Chris. Next up is the overall financial position of the town.
Hi, good evening. My name's Carol Capola, I am the finance director for the town of Harwich. I find that it's very difficult to talk about numbers unless you can see something, so I have a handout for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
More charts, more graphs. Thank you.
So I have a few charts here for you with a little bunch of numbers. As you're aware, we're just finalizing the fiscal year '17. It ended about five weeks ago. As such, we've been working hard to finalize those numbers. We have auditors in this week and so we are presenting to you preliminary numbers for FY '17 and then the budget for '18 and then going all the way back to FY '14 and providing information for the operating budget. You'll see the results of operations of the general fund, or what we call the operating budget for those years. We've put together a simple graph for you and the line is interesting for you because most governments look at unassigned, or sometimes they call it undesignated, fund balance as an indicator of the operations in the financial positions of any government. It's common language and lots of people probably would be able to think of it as retained earnings for a business. The, it's typical that a community will set a percentage goal of what is our fund balance gonna be? Is it gonna be a certain percentage of our operating budget? Typically, what we see is somewhere around, you know, it ranges anywhere from seven to 15 percent. For the town of Harwich, right now, it's estimated to be about somewhere around 5 percent. The town of Harwich does have, if we go to the second chart, the town of Harwich does have a free cash policy and stabilization fund policy. Stabilization funds are essential for the ongoing operations of any municipality and that they provide emergency monies in case there was a disaster. In addition to that, free cash can be used for, to, to, it, it's really a surplus. Surplus of prior year revenues and expenditures, so budgeted dollars that weren't spent because they didn't need to be spent. And what most municipalities do is they take those monies and they say, how can we fund projects, purchases that are large in nature, that we would typically go out and sell bonds for? How can we fund those? And they put together a plan, as the town of Harwich has, put together a plan and is using, and this year, $1.7 million of free cash from the prior fiscal year. Well, the results, the early results and the preliminary results of FY '17 would say that the free cash estimation for the town of Harwich is gonna be somewhere around $2 million, which is significant. In addition to that, the town has worked diligently to set aside what we call stabilization funds. Those funds needed in emergency situations. Today, the, the balance of the stabilization fund is over, is nearly $3 million with $1.7 million going in, in FY '17. Then we have the challenge of funding OPEB. If you're familiar with OPEB, it's, it's shortened for Other Post-Employment Benefit. And those are liabilities that the town has for employees that will be retiring or have retired. And so it's the benefits that the town provided to them on an ongoing basis as they retire, their health insurance and the cost of the health insurance over their lives. So the OPEB, the town has started funding OPEB and is, has balances there, showing, showing here, of 6.6, I'm sorry, $667,000 at the end of June.
Carol, could you just tell us what the outstanding OPEB number is, liability?
I can tell you what it was two years ago. It was $42 million.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The, that OPEB funding or the, the liability is prepared by an actuary and the town is required to have that actuarial dollars valued every two years. So we're currently under the process of that right now.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Long-term debt, let's, we talked a little about long-term debt, that it has to do with wastewater, but the town has other long-term debt to fund capital projects and infrastructure improvements such as roadway improvements and building a new fire station and so on. The town has just recently retired school debt of nearly a million dollars. That was a million dollars a year payment. So you see that the, the outstanding debt here in this last chart, on the third page, has reduced significantly. The town has a fiscal policy with regard to debt service. That policy, or the goal of that policy is that debt service on an annual basis, so that means what, what the town pays for principal and interest on all of its debt on an annual basis never goes above 18 percent of the operating budget. Right now, for FY '18, it's gonna be about 4 percent, which it, which is certainly well within the, um, the range set forth in the policy. So the town also issues short-term debt. And what is short-term debt? So we call it bands, bond anticipation notes. Those are one-year or, or shorter in nature. So what that means is if we're not ready to go out to bond yet, because there's a lot of costs that are associated with that, we would take on short-term debt. And then, when we're able to take all of the bonding that has been approved by the voters, together, we'll go out and sell larger amounts of bonds. And that typically provides a better interest rate and the costs are spread out over, let's say, $20 million worth of, versus $1 million. So with that said, the town has authorized debt that it hasn't issued yet. And that's listed here as well. So as of June 30th, and this is, this is not including anything that was approved in FY '18, but as of June 30th, the town had $13 million that was authorized at town meeting or authorized by ballot votes that was yet unissued. So there's projects outstanding and some of the projects that are outstanding were discussed today. There may be some permitting, you know, delays or things of that nature and the town cannot borrow those funds until we start spending the money. We have to have a spending plan to do that. And so once that happens, we'll be able to sell bonds and, and to fund those projects. So in May of 2017, at the town meeting, annual town meeting, the, it was approved, the operating budget for the town of over $61 million. There were numerous debt exclusions approved and a capital exclusion. And then in May of 16, I'm sorry, May 16th of 2017, it went to the voters and all of it was approved as well. For the first time this year, the town will be preparing a comprehensive annual financial report. And that report, it's a document. But within that document, there are introductory sections, financial sections. We have lots of narrative in case people just don't wanna look at numbers when we have an entire statistical section that'll span 10 years. We find that, I've found in my experience, that the document provides transparency to readers to, to allow them to compare easily one community with another. So we, I anticipate that we will be submitting that document to GFOA, which is the Government Finance Officers Association. They offer an award on an annual basis for an outstanding document and they consider that a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. I have been involved with communities that have received that before. I've prepared the document before. I've also prepared their sister document, which is all about budgeting and, and transparency in budgeting. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. You certainly can reach me at any time. My information is right on the website and I'd, I'd be happy to speak with any of you.
Thank you, Carol. Chris?
Thank you.
Sir?
Yeah.
Go ahead and stand.
We'll let him go first.
Bill Vandenjul from Parlow Street. This may sound like a crazy question, but with respect to OPEB, there's always a chance that all you retirees will live to be 100. How is that dealt with? Very unlikely, but probability would say it could happen.
Yeah, there's a lot more smarter people in the world than I, but there's these folks called actuaries and it's kinda morbid, but they have mortality tables. So they, they study at what the life expectancy is for certain regions. So they know pretty definitively that, you know, the average man in Cape Cod will live until, I, I don't remember the exact age, but I think it's like 82. A woman would last, you know, live, I shouldn't say last, that sounds bad. I've been married for 25 years, I love my wife. But she is three years older than I am for that reason, but, uh...
You can't dig out of this.
I should, yeah, I'm not gonna be able to dig out of that. But the average age for women is about, I think, 85 to 87. So they, they know that fairly definitively and if they don't, they, they change those tables so they adjust, so that liability adjusts.
Step up, step, sir, sir, step up. Will you just repeat what he said?
Yeah, I, I think the, the question is, what happens if we get to a, a life expectancy where everyone achieves 95 to 100? And, and I guess the answer to that is that that number, the liability, will go up and that will be tracked and monitored. Right now, they require that we look at that every two years so that they will look at that from an actuarial standpoint and adjust those numbers. The mortality tables don't change that often though. I think the last one I saw was about 2001 and the one before that was 1986 was one that was commonly used. Thank you.
Christine Byron, I'm sorry, I'm running out of time with your podium. I did read in the Wall Street Journal that people are dying, we're going backwards a little in part of the population. So I just had a question about this annual debt service, is that interest?
That, that's principal and, and, principal and interest.
Oh, okay, so, yeah, 'cause I was wondering, is our, interest rates are expected to go up? If that was gonna have any impact on that number? Probably if it includes both those.
I think that's a great question. You know, one thing I've learned, I've been doing this, my, this is my 27th year, so I've been doing this for a little bit and, and no one can really predict what's gonna happen. I, I think 15 years ago, if you said that interest rates would be at the, the levels they're at now for an extended period, people probably wouldn't believe it. So, you know, I, I think that there will be fluctuations. One way that we can really protect ourselves and fairly protect ourselves fairly effectively is, is a twofold strategy. One is on the wastewater project, we actually will borrow money from what's called the Water Pollution Control Trust in, in Boston. It's a quasi-state agency, so it's basically state money that they use to allow people to borrow money for, for water projects and for wastewater projects. And some of those borrowings right now is about 2 percent. So there is a cap on, on those of about 2 percent. And then in some cases, they have done loan forgiveness, so it's a 0 percent. So we're not gonna be going out necessarily for the wastewater, the $200 million worth of projects, to the marketplace itself. Now, we did go out to the marketplace for the Monomoy School, so there are times in which we go out to the marketplace. We actually did really well. The, the level of, the, the interest rate on that was actually pretty favorable for the town. But one of the things that we can do to protect ourselves is kinda what Carol was kind of alluding to is when you do a comprehensive annual financial report, when you stabilize the, the finances of the community and the, and the finances of the community over the last five years have, have significantly stabilized to a point in which we would be considered to be a AAA-rated community. And a AAA-rated community get really two values from that. The first value from being a AAA-rated community is that you have a decreased borrowing amount, so the, the level of borrowing is less. That's not as significant when you're talking about it's a 10th of a percent or a 20th of a percent. It, it's not a huge number. But when you're talking about doing projects that are 10 and $15 million over 20 years, then, then that has some, some element of significance. The other thing is on AAA-rated communities, that the, the value of being a AAA-rated community is that you're able to weather storms better, financial storms, you're able to deal with issues and you have a, a lower level of debt service. So one of the things that, for folks that have a, a real interest, I, I think my, my budget message is unfortunately up to about 40 pages. But to truly understand the way municipal finance works is a... But to truly understand the way municipal finance works is a lot of different components. And I would encourage you, if you go on to our website, that the budget message is on there, and you can see, the town has progressively gotten significantly better financially, and obviously, we continue that trend, as was reported tonight. So, I think that we're on a very good trajectory. And when you take into account that we've been doing harbor projects, we just did the Montemoy School project, we've had significant challenges, and we've been able to meet those and still improve our financial position. So, not to say that we'll be able to always continue that, but certainly, that's the hope, is to continue to map that out and make sure we can weather those storms moving forward.
Chris, you wanted to add to Carol's?
Well, actually, yeah, the one thing that Carol had, just on the element of transparency, I don't know, Carol, if you wanted to mention that we rolled out this past year a new software package, and do you want to comment on that?
The town of Harwich began using a virtual budget software program, and it's called Visigo. And what's loaded on there are numerous years of budget information, and allows any user to be able to go in and take a look and see, what did they budget for revenues? What is the collector budgeting for revenues? What about expenses in the Department of Public Works? What departments essentially pay for themselves, they're self-sustaining, such as the golf department, or, you know, portions of recreation, or Harbor Master, or those kind of areas or departments, that run programs or collect revenue that directly offsets their budgets? It's a transparent way that the town can share with residents or non-residents, users of financial information, that allows you to drill down, or take a step back and look at the big picture, whichever means the most to you. And I believe that should be live as of now. I know that, I was in touch with them six or so weeks ago, asking them to, you know, set it free, as you will. So, I hope that you have the time to take a look at it and give us your comments on it. We certainly would welcome those at any time.
Thank you, Carol. Any questions for the finance director or the town administrator? Okay, now we'll move on to questions and comments from you. Any questions and comments?
Hi, I'm Rick Moriarty. We live on Don Road. First of all, I want to thank you for the improvements in the town website over the last year or so. There is much more readily available information there. I had spoken to Mr. McCaskill earlier this summer about the fact that email addresses for selectmen weren't available online. Now they are. Thank you, that helps. We have a property on our street that's been burned out for a year and a half after a fire, and when we went and did some looking into this property, there had been no taxes paid for a number of years. And I know the issue of tax liens came up several months ago, and I wanted to find out what an update was, where you're standing on tax liens, and helping clean up that amount of money.
Great, thank you. Chris, do you want to give an overview of where we are now?
Yes, thank you for the opportunity. I wish we were a lot further along. We've had some significant staff changes. We've had a significant number of people that have left the organization, so our focal point over the last, really, thirty to sixty days has been trying to make sure we maintain the organization. So, that's been one of our focal points. To your specific question, we have about five million dollars' worth of back taxes that are owed to us. What the administration is looking at is that we will take various approaches in which to address that situation. In some cases, as in the case of Judah Eldredge property, and this is something that we disclosed at town meeting a couple of years ago, that there are properties that we will not be able to identify the owners, so therefore, no one ever pays taxes, because no one knows who truly owns it. In some of those circumstances, as in that circumstance, about four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars is owed to us out of that five million, that we will approach town meeting and approach the CPC, the Capital, sorry, the Community Preservation Committee, to seek funds to obtain that property as open space, to be able to rectify that. I believe also that I have had meetings with various property owners, along with the treasurer and the finance director, that we want to try to make sure that we identify who owns what. And one of the things that we have been, at least been raised to my attention in a more direct way, is that in some cases, a property owner has potentially legal ownership of property, but we may not have been taxing it appropriately. So, we don't want to take away property that is legally owned by somebody, that our tax records are in conflict with that ownership. So, we are having meetings with folks to try to clear up those issues. I don't have an exact number on that in terms of what the proportion of that is. I know that we will look at, going back to that tax lien list, and seeing if there are properties that it makes sense for the town to sell those liens, to allow an outside vendor to come in and be able to acquire, or try to clean those up, and re-mark, repurpose those properties. So, that is something that maybe, the property that you're alluding to, may be a candidate for that. And then, really, the fourth area is that we will look at properties that, similar to the Judah Eldredge, where we could take for conservation purposes, there may be some properties, if there's a house on it now, that the town may deem that we want to take that property by eminent domain, and turn that over to a housing trust to do for housing purposes, market rate housing or affordable housing. So, those properties, we're kind of going through and doing an analysis, if you would, to see which category some of those properties make sense to go in. And then, quite honestly, there's going to be another category where some of these back taxes and the property itself is going to be too small and lack any potential use. So, we need to find out what approach you want to take for those properties. But one of the things, I've been the administrator for three and a half years, this has been in the works for probably almost decades. So, cleaning it up is going to be, is going to take some time. But I think that the more we dig into this, the more tools we see, we definitely can take an approach. I think we had narrowed that list down to about one-hundred-and-seventeen properties. So, that is a more manageable number. I think we started off at about over three-hundred, and doing the tax lien sale by itself generated about thirty to forty payment agreements that people came forward to make. So, we are making a dent into the problem, but it's going to take us a little bit of time to get to a better solution. And if you do have specific properties that you want us to look at, please let me know, and we'll give that a higher priority.
So, as I said before, I'm Christine Byron, I'm a non-resident taxpayer from Rhode Island. And I was wondering, I've written to you recently about my concerns of legalizing marijuana sale in town, and Mr. Clark was kind enough to talk to me about it about a month ago. Could you bring us up to date, where things stand? I know there was a moratorium through the spring, and I, so what's happened with the process in Boston and the process locally?
So, the update is that not too much has changed from what we had talked about before, just to kind of let the community know that there's two types of marijuana that are at issue. Statewide, there was the issue of medical marijuana. That is something that's under the jurisdiction of the state, State Department of Public Health, and we attempted to get some zoning, and we were not successful. So, that medical marijuana can be distributed in any location where we don't have zoning that violates that. The second part, the more recent one, is the recreational use. And just in terms of the recreational use, the law that was passed by the residents of the Commonwealth allow for individual use in the individual home. I think each person in a home can have up to six plants. We don't, my job is just to enforce this stuff, so I don't really have an opinion on the pros and cons of it, it's just merely to enforce it. The second part of the recreational marijuana is the ability to be able to sell marijuana through a retail shop. And what was approached before town meeting, the selectmen said, "We want to have time to look at this and time to study this." So, they asked town meeting, and town meeting agreed to do a moratorium, to hold off on making a decision of that, until planning board can decide what areas in town does it make sense to have recreational retail be sold and what hasn't. So, that is still a work in process. I know I just got, I think it was today or yesterday, a state, it was a Supreme Court decision or a state action, so I'm giving us some guidance that the attorney has put out. So, I will be making arrangements to meet with the attorney to find out what changes that has in terms of that, and once I have a better sense for the changes that occurred very recently, I'll be able to give an additional update to the board.
Thank you, Chris. Go around the front of it.
Is there a possibility of a ban, when you talk about it? I'm just reading the Globe. I don't know if any of that information's correct or not.
There is a possibility of a ban.
I think I intimated to her on the phone that, at least from my standpoint, the board appeared to be somewhat split on the topic of how they wanted to approach marijuana, and that we needed to get additional information so an informed decision could be made.
Right. Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you all for coming. We have the rest of our regular meeting, so Larry, can I get a...
You may.
...motion to close the...
I move we close the non-resident taxpayers' meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. All right, can I get a motion on the consent agenda? We're going to pull D from the consent agenda, Larry, for now.
Right.
Well, you're going to take that up separately, as I understand those questions?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I move the following consent agenda. A, approve and sign proclamation request from the Cape and Island Suicide Prevention Coalition. B, approve application for common victory license by Thirty Earl Road LLC, known as the Commodore Inn. C, confirm appointment of Shaylee Delaney as executive assistant in community development. As you said, we'll hold D for now. E, approve election workers for Democratic and Republican Town Committee.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve consent agenda items A, B, C, and E. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Larry, we read D.
D is confirm appointment of council on aging director. And so, says information pending, so that's our part now.
Second on that?
Second.
Discussion, Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My interest in having this pulled is roughly the same as it was for the one-day liquor license. There are certain things, you know, that you can put through a consent agenda, and there are other things that really deserve some discussion on their own. When this happened, and I certainly, and I do plan on voting in the affirmative for this, but when this happened, the thought came up that in the charter, the selectmen have the ability at the program level, the highest program level, to veto an appointment, which would necessarily imply that you'd have information on the process and the finalists in a generic way. There's no way to make an informed decision about whether you will assent to the appointment for department head or not. That being said, Chris and I had a conversation today. He did deliver a memo that I'm sure you all got. I'm comfortable with that. Also, I'd like to generically know, at least for the board's purposes, you know, who might have been in the finalist category, without revealing who they were ultimately, so that would compromise their current employment. But, again, the charter calls for us to make an informed decision about whether we do or don't agree with the decision, and there's no way to do that with the information that we did have at hand.
Thank you, Don.
With that, I'd be willing to make a motion for that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In response to the inquiry, I realize that I've been doing this for a while, and we don't always, I take it for granted sometimes. And what we wanted to do here is to lay out the process that we do use in the recruitment of people. This is a process that I've used for many, many years at this stage. And just to kind of go through, and one of the things, just to kind of preface my remarks, we do have an internal process that, by union contract, that we do offer it internally. If we do not get adequate internal candidates, then we do open it up to the outside. On the council on aging director position in particular, we posted on June 13th of 17. It closed on June 26th. We had received eleven applications. The interview team consisted of myself, a representative from the Friends of the Council on Aging. We appreciate very much that Chatham Council on Aging Director came over to participate in the process. They asked me to do a lot, one of which is not to be an expert at council on aging issues. As people down there will attest, I've been finding my way in the dark. And Richard Wastack, the council on aging, the new council on aging chair, participated. Carolyn Carey was also helpful in that process, and then Charlene, as the Human Resources Director for the town, as the Assistant Town Administrator. On the eleven applications, we distribute those, we select people that we believe have some merit. We do that independently, so that way, we get six individual viewpoints. In this case, out of that, three candidates were selected to be interviewed. In order to ensure the fairness of the interview process, we allocate a certain amount of time for the interview, and we ask the same, in this case, twelve predetermined questions. And then, the person comes in, or persons come in, and they interview individually. And then, at the end of that process, we make an informed decision. In this case, I'm very happy to report, and I did not have the name on the agenda because this person had not provided notice to their current employer. So, I wanted to make sure that she had that opportunity to speak to their current employer. In this case, it's Judy Wilson, who is the council on aging director over in the town of Orleans. And she has about twenty years of cumulative experience in both council on aging and as elder affairs related issues. She has a bachelor's degree in sociology with a concentration in social work from the Massachusetts College of Liberal Arts. I believe out of that twenty years of experience, she has about nine as a council on aging director. And the interesting part, and kind of quite honestly, the flattering part, is she's taken a little bit of a cut in pay, but she thinks that the town of Harwich is probably a better place to be for her in her time and her career. And I think that's a nice compliment to the organization that she's willing to come over, basically make a lateral move from a work standard, and to take a little cut in pay from a salary standard, and look forward to. With that, I would say, and I'll disclose here publicly, that, you know, I believe that she will do good things for us, and she will be a real asset to this organization. And I told her that if she did light the world on fire, that, you know, we could certainly go back and look at how we structured that position and the duties. And if she does expand those duties, that I would at least propose making changes to that job description. But in order to have change to a job description, we have to get better value and more work on the people. And she was, she understood that upfront, and she's coming over.
Thank you, Chris. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's always easier to make the process point when you're in support of something for the future. So, with that, I make a motion that we confirm the appointment.
We already have a motion, so we don't need a motion. So, we're in discussion. We've already got the motion.
Can we second it?
Any more discussion?
Seconded, yeah.
Any more discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
And she starts September 5th, so no one will be happier than I. I get back to my main job.
Next up, public hearings and presentations. We have a presentation from VHB on the Route 28 West Harwich TIP Project.
The comment? You know, public comment?
We had public comment. We will, well, right now, we're going to do this. Thank you, and thank you for your patience, waiting this long to speak.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. We have with us tonight two representatives from VHB, Trish Domakin, who I believe is a principal in VHB, and Steve Rhodes, who is a project manager and engineer. With that, I'd just like to turn it over. They got a PowerPoint to go through, and at the end of that, I'd like to discuss some remaining items that was in my memo.
Great, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Trish Dom, I'm Trish Domakin. That's not Trish Domakin. I'm the Director of Municipal Services for VHB. I'm the Director of Municipal Services for VHB. Thank you very much for inviting us in here to speak about the West Harwich project. It's an exciting project. It's been a long time coming and we're just going to briefly speak about it tonight. Just the, the presentation overview, we're going to really super quick, talk about the history, what the need of the project, what the roadway infrastructure really needs out there. We have a few pictures of the existing conditions just to demonstrate what the needs are. And there's a light show too. The project support, what we've been working with, you know, the, the neighborhood and, and we had a sidewalk out there that was very, very informative. It was great to have the, the folks out there giving us their ideas. Some of the improvements and then the construction cost and what to expect in the future. So we've been, a few years now, we've been talking to the DPW Director and, and the Town Administrator about the project itself. And what we did was we talked about the vision that the town had for Route 28, extending out what the work that Dennis has done on 28 and Upper County Road into Harwich itself to the Herring River. And we met with Mass DOT to talk about it also. But before we met with Mass DOT, we talked to the stakeholders, some of the neighborhood folks, some of the people that were concerned that, you know, if it's a state project, state funding, federal funding, that it's going to be widened out and it's going to obliterate the, the character of, of West Harwich. And that's really not the case. We want to make sure that whatever's designed meets state and federal standards, but also meets the character, doesn't take away from the beauty that's along Captain's Row and that stretch of roadway. It's September 2015, we, we did a sidewalk. There was stakeholders from Cape Cod Commission, Mass DOT, the Town of Dennis in Harwich. And also, like I had mentioned, some of the folks in the neighborhood area. Kind of weird. I'm used to standing up and speaking to a screen. So the project limits go from Upper County Road in Dennis, they don't see Mr. Hand, right? Goes along Route 28 and then it, it ends at the Herring River. There's about, it's just shy of a mile. It's about 4,000 linear feet for the roadway itself. It's mass highway jurisdiction, so it's, it's state highway along that stretch of, of roadway itself. Am I talking about this or are you talking about this? I can talk forever. So Mass DOT has a policy now. It's, it's called the Healthy Transportation Policy and it's kind of interesting. It's, it's, you know, every state has their own policy, but Mass DOT really wants to implement healthy transportation. The Governor, Lieutenant Governor, Secretary of Transportation and Secretary of Environmental Affairs was a couple of weeks ago down talking about promoting bicycle transportation and pedestrians at the Cape Cod Rail Trail. They're really focused on Cape Cod. They really want to implement healthy transportation policies. And in doing so, they want to improve any corridor that they construct for bicycle accommodations and also pedestrians. So one of the things that we, we are focusing on along this corridor is to improve pedestrian mobility along Route 28. And also bicycle accommodation, not necessarily on the roadway itself, maybe a bypass sections of the roadway where it comes really narrow. And we don't want to widen it out and, and, you know, disrupt any of the character that's out there right now. There are substandard elements along the corridor. I think Mr. Hooper mentioned the traffic signal and, and the level of service F at the intersection of Division Street with Route 28. ADA accessibility, the American Disability Act is something that we need to focus on. The sidewalks out there, they're, they're really nonexistent now, you know, there, there's been a lot of beautiful shrubbery that's grown and, and covered a lot of the sidewalk areas. And also poor maintenance of the sidewalks have just made it really difficult to walk along that section of roadway. And also the, the shoulder widths themselves are really super narrow, so we're, we're just going to address that also. So just to real quick, the project need, we are extending out the, the roadway improvements, the, the improvements that Dennis is doing to their, their section of, of Route 28 Main Street. It's going to be a continuation. It's not going to be one project and then right at the town line, a separate project. We are going to be blending in some of the materials in there so that it's a continuous flow along the roadway itself. And improve the traffic signals also at Upper County Road that will be worked in concert with the Division Street signals. We're going to, one of the things that some of the stakeholders wanted was a clear demarcation between the residential area and the, the retail area. So that, you know, some of the, the cement concrete sidewalks or some of the granite curbing wasn't extended into the residential area and, and make it more of a hardscape. They wanted a more natural inviting residential type feel to the, the corridor itself. And we did meet with Mass DOT and they're, they're willing to, to consider that instead of having granite curbing everywhere, which was terrific. Have a streetscape, so something along, some type of theme along the section in West Harwich to create a place of sense in that area. So that's something that's really exciting. There's a lot of history. We've been meeting with Mr. Berry to talk about the history along Captain's Row. So we're going to try to engage or implement some of that streetscape along the corridor itself. Healthy transportation, we just talked about. We're going to reconstruct the roadway itself. So any of the drainage that's out there, any of the pavement that's out there is going to be rehabilitated, so it's going to be new. New signals and again ADA compliance. We're really digging that ADA compliance on every, every slide. Me? Okay. So the drainage that's out there right now is really causing havoc with the roadway itself. And actually, some of the, the systems that are out there, they use a lot of waterways. So there's bituminous that comes from the roadway and goes into catch basins that are a lot lower grade than the roadway itself, which is a tripping hazard. But it's also something that's not really used now with Mass DEP's requirements of best management practices and stormwater guidelines. So we'll be upgrading all the, the drainage, including putting in water quality features as part of the drainage system. We're going to make a consistent roadway width. So right now the roadway kind of narrows like an hourglass a little bit. So we are going to take a look at it. We don't want to, this is at the church, we're not necessarily going to narrow the road because that's a nice feature that you have out there. But maybe better utilize the cross section that's out there, make it more inviting. People like to fly around that, that curve right at the church. So what we're going to do is make that a little bit more enhanced so that people see that as a place, a destination instead of just a cut through. And I guess we're just going to try to reuse what's out there right now. Is this me or you? So the existing conditions out there, this is at the church. So you can see that the roadway is super wide there, that the crosswalk that's right in front of the church is, is really long. So people that are trying to get from the parking area, maybe during an event across Main Street, it, it takes a while to get there. So what we're going to do is perhaps shrink that down a little bit, use a little bit of a bulb out. I think there's a bus stop here too that we're going to take a look at. We're also considering some type of specialty enhanced lighting so that at night, instead of just having the Cobra heads out there, something more pedestrian scale, something that brings a place of sense to this location. The fencing that's shown here, that's a beautiful white fence, we're not going to be impacting anything like that. Again, we're trying to create a, not take away from the beauty of the corridor, just kind of spruce it up a bit. Some of, am I? Okay. So some of the, the areas that we are going to be improving is the, the drainage at some of the driveway areas. You can see there that there's a lot of puddling and such. And again, it's an antiquated drainage system. So what we'll be taking a look at is putting in new catch basins and new pipes and manholes to collect some of the, the drainage that's ponding at the driveway entrances. And to note here, you can see how the, the, the curbing curves around that sidewalk and then all of a sudden you're in that driveway. And what we're going to do is put in wheelchair ramps, reconstruct the sideways, sidewalks themselves, excuse me. Make sure that they're four feet wide with a proper wheelchair ramp that gets to the driveway. And maybe we're not going to put it down flush to the roadway like the driveway is right now. Maybe we'll bring the driveway up a little bit so that there's positive drainage on the roadway, not flooding out private property. We're not there yet. Here's a few examples of the really narrow sidewalks and, and some of the sand that's been on the sidewalks just from, you know, roadway salt and sand in the winter that hasn't really been cleaned up. And what happens is that a lot of weeds and grass like to grow on it. So it really does shrink up the, the accessible area of the sidewalks themselves. So it's, it's difficult to walk down Main Street. And what we're going to do is widen that out to make sure that, that it's accessible for all, accessible for all. So we did receive public input. We did present last year at the Board of Selectmen. And that, that presentation was to vote to submit the project need form, the first month, a funding mechanism for Mass DOT to get approval for the construction funding. As Mr. Hooper had mentioned earlier, the, the construction cost for the project and any right of way acquisitions would be borne by the state. So the, the funding application forms had been submitted. We talked to Mass DOT. They, they came to the sidewalk and we got approval. This year, actually, it took a full year for them to approve the project for inclusion on the Transportation Improvement Program. It's great. It's terrific. Just, I'm not going to go through each of the dates, but it started, we submitted after the Board of Selectmen vote. And it took about a year for all of the sequencing to happen, responding to comments, meeting with DOT, meeting with Cape Cod Commission and the JTC, the Joint Transportation Committee, to talk about this project and have it included on the 2022 TIP.
Now it's my turn. I'm going to talk to you tonight about some of the improvements that we can make to the corridor. Starting out with the pedestrian accommodations, we would propose five foot sidewalks on each side of the roadway. And we look at five foot bikeway shoulders for bicycle accommodations in the road. And as Trish mentioned earlier, we've been talking with Mass DOT about the possibility of including some Cape Cod berm to soften the feel of the corridor instead of the traditional granite curb that the state likes to see on some of their roadways. This is our current typical cross section for the retail area at the Division Street area. It involves two 11 foot travel lanes and the two five foot bike lanes that I just mentioned in the shoulder of the roadway. There's granite curb here proposed in the, in the retail area. And you can see the two five, five foot exclusive of curb HME sidewalks. Moving to the east in the residential area, we introduced the Cape Cod berm on the right side of the road. And we have a grass buffer that we can work in here with the increasing right of way width. And that'll be anywhere from two to five feet on average, minimum two feet. You have another five foot sidewalk on the right. And on the left, we're looking at a granite curb with a five foot sidewalk. This is a concept level plan of the area around the Baptist Church, about in the center of the project. This is where we have the most right of way available. And again, as Trish mentioned, we're looking at kind of standardizing, excuse me, standardizing the roadway section through here. So there's a lot of pavement out there today and we can do a lot with it. We can add some street trees. We can add a gathering area perhaps in front of the church. We can shorten the crosswalk length to make that safer for pedestrians. And again, we're open to working with all the residents in this area to look at some of the elements that they might like to see restored in this area, which have historical meaning. The current construction cost that's funded is $5.6 million. The schedule would run from fall of 2017, concluding with a construction advertisement in the fiscal year 2022 of the state. And so that could be as soon as the summer of 2021. Again, I'd like to thank you all for your time tonight and for having us, and we'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you. I was at that initial hearing and it seemed like you had really good representation from the Captain's Row folks and, and the neighbors. I know lighting was talked about, the soft buffers we're talking about. But if memory serves me correct, you had a good consensus that they supported the project? And Chris, is that Sally's public comment?
Yeah, this is, and I'll pass it along to you, Mr. Chairman, not on this topic, but on, on another topic. This copy's here for everyone. Just, I, I think there was really good public, public input in terms of this. And I, I do think VHB has done a, a good job of incorporating those design comments in. The one thing, and maybe it was said when I was out of the room, but the, the $5.6 million is not a town obligation. That would be TIP funding. So just to, to make that clear. And I think the request that's before the board this evening is to basically approve a contract that is, I want to say 350,000. I know I'm going to be off a little bit. But out of that, the request is 175,000 of which we have funding that would come from the county. The, the town had mitigation, traffic mitigation monies that were put into the, to the county for various projects. And it's for enhancing transportation and, and pedestrian improvements. This is right in that ballpark. So the idea would be that out of the 350 plus or minus, that the 175 is kind of what's needed right now to kind of get us going and, and to get the designs migrated to a point where they can be reviewed. And then the balance of the money would probably be expended during the actual construction work. So that would be conceivably, is it 2022 that we're looking at? So that would be in the out years. So it would be kind of a two-stage contract or I think three, you had three in there. What we would fund for this year is out of the, the grant money. And then in subsequent years, we would look at funding from Chapter 90 or from our roadway project money that we put forth to kind of do that. So it, that hundred and, the 157, the, the amount that's left, we would kind of take those probably in pieces in the out years. So we, we will program, program that into the budget now that we know that there's a anticipated 2022 start date.
Larry?
No questions.
Do you know?
The Cape Cod berm, that's asphalt?
Yes.
And it's only on one side of the, of the corridor there? Is that true? Just looking at that.
Yeah, so what we do, so what's, what we typically do is you have to have, if you have a sidewalk that's right next to a roadway, especially one with so much traffic, such as Main Street, you have to have a vertical barrier to meet standards. But if the sidewalk is offset, you don't have to have a vertical barrier. You can have that berm, that Cape Cod berm. So the plan was when the sidewalk was right next to the roadway itself, it would have the vertical barrier, the granite curbing. But in the residential area, on the side of, of Main Street that has most of the houses, the sidewalk's going to be offset from the roadway. And it's going to vary a little bit. It's, it's not going to have a lot of, like a meandering walkway. It's going to be offset, but it's going to be offset in a way that it looks like it's a more natural walkway away from the road. So because there's an offset, there's a two foot offset from the roadway on that side, we can use that, that Cape Cod berm.
So going beyond the plaza east toward the Herring River?
Yep.
It seems like both sides have residential. So I wasn't sure if you were going to put the berm on both sides of the street there or just limit it to the north side.
If you're looking at this.
Yep.
North is down?
North is up.
North is up. So it's going to be on the south side. We were planning on having it on the south side.
Okay. South side. That's all. Just curious. Thanks.
Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, the only thing I was interested in is a clarification for the folks who are watching this and listening to you is, can you give us like a firmer idea of where the retail begins and ends and approximately how long that is?
Sure. So we consider the, the more retail centric area to be from the Dennisport side of the project up to about Silver Street. There's a good number of commercial properties on the north side of the road in that area. And from there, heading eastward, it kind of transitions into more of a residential feel.
Can you give like an approximation of where?
Silver Street's at the.
Yeah, but what business would be associated with that?
The Hibachi place or whatever that's called. The Noble House.
Noble House? Okay, so roughly from the Division Street to the Noble House then?
Yeah, it's probably about 400, 500 feet or so.
Chris?
I just want to add a little bit to, I had a chance to look at the contract. One of the things that we should have a better advantage is because we have partnered up with the town of Dennis. So one of the things that I wanted to make sure was how do we get to a equitable arrangement? So on the distance of the roadway itself, it's vast majority of that is, is Harwich. So that is 89 and, 89% and 11% for the town of Dennis. On the intersection, most of that On the intersection, most of that intersection, town line, that intersection is kind of a a hybrid intersection where you have the two lights and the and the two traffic movements. I don't know if that's the right way to say it, but most of that is in Dennis. So 75% of that cost is related to Dennis and 25% is related to Harwich. So I I wanted to make sure that we had an equitable split. I I I don't think I've asked this question. I presume Dennis is okay with all these the splits and and how that was. I mean, you have a contract with them as well as with us or conceivably with us now. So that that is one that's been agreed to by them.
We have been working with Dennis in concert with Harwich. So they're looking to fund this project, I think, in the fall. So it's lagging like a month or so, but they've lined it up. They they have the monies available for it.
Okay.
So looking at the existing conditions picture. Let me get back there. The area around the Irish Pub. And with what you're proposing with bike lanes and sidewalks, with what's there now, and where I'm going with this, I think, is Pleasant Lake, trying not to repeat Pleasant Lake. How much land are we taking? So in this stretch, how much of people's yards are we going to get in? Actually, the whole stretch.
Can you show the the image?
The cross-section?
The cross-section, because I I think I anticipate, because I have the same the same question.
So.
It's about four feet.
Yeah, how much how much are we going to get into this? And I guess to pass Selectmen Linda Sabula's question, I think it was two years ago. When are we going to get out there and stake the ground? I mean, I know that at that time, Link said, well, we really can't stake the ground until the project is underway. But what I'd like to avoid is a board and and really get into the educational piece of this before we get ahead of ourselves. People went crazy on Pleasant Lake last minute and that was a terrible experience for you, wasn't it, Link? Go ahead.
Nice weather we're having. I'd like to talk about a couple issues. One, to clarify, Route 28 is Mass DOT right-of-way, is the state property. You look at the sidewalks, the overgrowth, I'm not allowed to do anything out there. That's state property. I am sure if this project is constructed, they have a policy in which the town then signs an agreement, or the board signs an agreement with them, that makes us responsible in perpetuity for maintaining those sidewalks in the future. As Mass DOT right-of-way, they would be responsible for any acquisition of temporary easements, permanent easements, whatever. They would be handling all of that. When you had to bring up 124, I want to say this work here that has already been done over the last two years is before we did anything on 124. Meaning that this this work now has been done on the front end over butter meetings and everything else that they had the list on, was was work that you normally incorporate in the project once you get going. With 124, honestly, I showed up with blank plans, with blank plans. We had done survey, but with blank plans and say, what would you like to see in front of your property? And we did not need any property takings for that. So I absolutely want to avoid any situations like that. We have been extremely proactive, working with the Captain's Row people, inviting them in, having public meetings, sidewalks, and so forth. Obviously, we can't get out there and stake anything until a contract is signed and we have survey. I do not believe, and Trish, correct me if I'm wrong, that there's going to be necessary for any permanent takings out there.
There may be. So when we when we do the survey, so the the sequence that has to happen is we have to do the survey and we have to define where the property line is and where the limit of the state highway layout is. Because it does vary. It it is not a straight shot. I'm not sure about 124 or not, but this this right-of-way varies from what this is showing is 40 feet out to 80 feet, as I recall, of the church. It's pretty significant. So it does vary pretty a lot along the corridor and in less than a mile. So once we do that, once we define where the right-of-way is, and then what the cross-section needs to be in these areas, you know, we can shift the roadway to the left or to the right, north or south, east, west, and try to get the best fit. So until we actually get a full base map, property lines, and then define where the roadway is, we can't really say what the right-of-way needs are going to be for the project. But as Link has just mentioned, this is a Mass DOT right-of-way process. They will be securing the right-of-way that's needed, either temporary or permanent, for the corridor itself.
Chris?
Well, I I do think, because when you show these images and it shows the existing right-of-way at 40 feet, and then you show a layout that's 45 plus, that's going to get a reaction from people. And I think we've walked that corridor, I think I walked it twice now, that what you're what you just said, there are some sections in which it's 80 feet. So we need to have some kind of better detail to let people know that the amount of taking, because I think I I came in towards the tail end of the 124 project, probably the the gruesomeest of times. But, you know, one of the issues that I think people had was that they were going to lose their rose bushes. They were going to lose a lot of the amenities. And in this stretch, those amenities aren't as prevalent because the right-of-way is significantly wider in some of those areas. I I agree that not everyone is not going to be held harmless. There will be some people which there'll be some takings. But I think that we want to make sure that we, especially in the 80-foot stretch, that there will be no takings that will be needed in in large areas of this project.
The biggest objective is not to create a roadway that people are unhappy with, you know. We we I've done this for a long time. I'm not going to say how many decades, but we want to make sure that this is something that people engage people through the process. We want to make sure that people give us their comments. That's why we had this the brainstorming session and the sidewalks. And actually, we have included additional neighborhood meetings, I think six total, so that we can continue the dialogue between the folks that are interested, the stakeholders, the Town of Dennis also, just to make sure that what's designed out there meets the needs of the town.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'd like to let the board and the public know. We're talking two things about partnering with the Town of Dennis. But Town of Dennis also has a mile-long project that is slated for construction along that stretch that I believe is starting construction this fall.
That's correct.
That's correct.
Advertisement, yes.
About a mile of roadway from the Dennis Commons to stopping just shy of the intersection, that they are already in the works. The real impetus of this project came from when when 124 went south. The town administrator said, what other grant opportunities do we have or what other opportunities we have? And I said, I'm not heading down that road, no pun intended. And, you know, we thought, I thought, you know, the layperson doesn't realize you're on Route 28 as a state highway. And I would really hate for people to be driving along in in Dennis and have all nice new amenities. And Dennisport is had a wonderful facelift, new roadway, and they get to the town line and it'd be 40, 50 years old.
Thank you. Anything further? The ask here is for us to approve the contract for $332,958 and $175,667 to come out of money available from the county.
Yeah, actually, what I would like to ask, because that's spending money in fiscal years that, you know, the we approve or the board approves just up to the 175, because we know we have that money right now available. And then have a contingency vote on those other stages. Because I I think it may be important to do that. If we lock in and say it's going to be 2022, I mean, there is a chance that it could be 2021. There's also a chance it could be 2024. So I think, you know, if we can get a little bit closer, it probably makes sense to, let's get the design done and and get in the queue for the the new term there, whatever the the complete streets or whatever he.
Oh, yes.
The new terminology.
The transportation policy, yes.
Yeah.
Link?
Mr. Chairman, we do have 175 available in traffic mitigation funds that the Cape Cod Commission is holding. And that would require a simple MOU executed by the board to get a hold of those funds. We've used these mitigation funds in the past. Specifically, we designed the Queen Anne 124 intersection with mitigation funds. I gave the administrator some erroneous information on the capital plan. He wrote, all this was grant money. We have, the town has $350,000, $349,000 to be exact, in mitigation funds. Of that, only 175 is available for this type purpose.
Thank you. So what are we voting on, Phase 1?
I I would I would vote Phase 1 and then as we get closer to to Phase 2 and 3. I I do tend to, I've come around a little bit to to Link's thinking that we should just take it out of Chapter 90 or out of our allocation. But I think just from a time standpoint, I mean, just so much time would go by. I would rather have a more, a better estimate when we get closer. So I would just vote the the Task 1, that gets us through to what we need to to be eligible. And then gets, then we have to wait the waiting game to see whether we go in 2021, 22, or whatever it ends up being.
Does that get you where you need?
Right. The, yes, it'll get us to 25%, which is development of the concept plan, the base mapping. We can stake out the the layout at that time and, you know, talk to the the folks, have another sidewalk, have a public hearing on it.
And and Mr. Chairman, I hate to interrupt, but just for full disclosure, you know, this is similar to Chapter 90. We have identified grant funding that's available to us through the county. So this is not something that would be subject to appropriation at town meeting. It is similar to Chapter 90 where we could just have to identify the funding source and approve it.
Thank you. So can I get a motion to approve Phase 1 of the VHB Route 28 West Harwich tip project?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve Phase 1 of the tip project to be eligible for the development of the concept plan at $175,000.
Second.
Seconded. Any discussion?
Only if that's a correct figure. I see one of the discussions here is 175,667.
I see 658.
I see 658.
What number do you want?
On Page 19.
658.
17.
Seven.
Let's amend it to 175,658. 658.
17658 is is the number that I have as part of the agreement itself for our portion.
Okay. The narrative gives another number, which is interesting, but we'll go with that.
Going to amend the amount too. Just have to amend the amount.
Change the amount outside.
Okay.
175,658?
Yes.
Okay, seconded.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for your patience.
Thank you.
Okay, next up under Old Business is Town Administrator's Contract. As I announced in the beginning of this meeting, we did come to terms for a two-year extension on the Town Administrator's Contract. I don't think there's anything further on that. Next up is the ICMA TV promotional video. As we all recall, this came up in the last meeting. Has any, does anyone want to? Chris, you sent us new information. Do you want to speak on this or do you just want to turn it over to Dawn?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I think you're reading, I think you're reading my mind. I, you know, I I'm not as gung-ho as I was the first time out with this.
Does anyone want to reconsider last week's thought on this?
No.
Dawn?
I don't, just to comment. I I was unable to open the the examples. It was.
I thought the examples were very nice.
You could. I I was unable to.
I went to the Tennessee one. I was able to click right in.
I gotta say, it didn't have the, it didn't work. I got an error message. So it was just me then.
So without a positive motion on this, I'm going to assume that we don't want to do it. Thank you.
I didn't have to say a word.
New Business Administrative Update on Old Rec Building. Chris?
Yes, I just wanted to provide some information. At at one of the board meetings, there was a request that I reach out to the, I keep wanting to call them the Junior Theater. What is their official name?
Cape Cod Theater Company.
The Cape Cod Theater Company.
Good to say that.
So on the, I I did reach out. I met with the Executive Director, the new Executive Director, and I believe a a board.
Executive Director.
Yeah, the interim. The new chair, okay, and another member of the board. In that discussion, they said that they were in the process of undergoing a strategic a strategic planning session to see where they wanted to go. I I did float the idea to them, multiple ideas, that number one, they could consider using the middle school, the auditorium for some of their larger performances. I think, if I remember right, that the middle school was larger, I don't, I don't want to say, I think significantly larger than their current venue over on Division Street. And then I also floated the idea of utilizing the West Harwich School. They seem to be, at least their initial reaction, they they were happy in the location they're in now. And when I brought up about the desire to use that location for housing, they actually anticipated that the town would come forward and ask to use part of that site for housing. They actually said that in some of their early discussions, that if some of the property was used for housing, that maybe they could even have some of those units scheduled, or not scheduled, but dedicated for kind of artists, people that were actors that wanted to get in to have rental space. So I thought that that was at least a a good discussion, that they they had some real interest in in that idea. They had interest in the middle school. They didn't have as much interest on the the West Harwich School. But we have made arrangements, and I'm not sure if we have a firm date yet for those. I I think it's coming up maybe by the end of the week on Friday, that we said we would do a tour of each of the buildings. So obviously, if any board members wants to join. I haven't been to their junior theater location in on the border there on Division Street, so they were going to do a tour of that. But we would look at the middle school location. They were concerned that they don't need just the auditorium. And I pointed out to them that behind the auditorium, they have the band room. So there is additional space for them. And then conceivably, we we have those lockers that are in the in the locker rooms for sports that have zero use. So right now, if there's some other way to do individual voice lessons or things of that nature, take out the lockers, maybe put some soundproofing in, there may be other opportunities that we could explore. So I think taking them and and showing them the the areas in each case, so we'll look at the middle school, we'll look at the West Harwich School, and then look at the at their location and and just see if we can get a discussion. But it sounded like they wanted to make a more firm decision in terms of what direction they wanted to head in the late, early to late fall when they start having their strategic planning sessions.
I just have a quick question.
Yeah.
Did, were they under the impression that they would have exclusive rights to that auditorium in this discussion?
No.
Okay, good.
No.
Thank you, Chris. Anything from the board on this? Chris, I'd still like to get at some point, and I know you've been really busy, a complete breakdown of the rec.
Yeah, we, I don't know if Carol wants to, she she did do a lot more work on it, and if she's prepared to discuss. If you want to have it tonight, we are ready to go.
Okay.
That's just the Carol piece.
I had reached out to the theater group on numerous occasions. And we, the town received payment for their calendar year 14 and calendar year 15 lease payment in June. And then just received in July their calendar year 16 payment. I did some research on utilities because in the lease, it does talk about the town billing utilities. And what I found is that the last time that they had been billed utilities was in the spring of 2015. They were billed from July of 14 to December of 14. So there was a period in time, about a year and a half, that they were not billed. We did just bill them for the town's fiscal year 17, so that would, from July 1 of 16 to June 30 of 17. We did just send that bill out last Friday. But they've returned my call. I've also asked for the financial information that's required under the lease. And so I'm waiting to receive that as well.
When you get that, Carol, could you put that all into a memo so that we can, and I'll bring that back at that point? Thank you. Next up is the Middle School Cultural Center Open House Discussion. Carolyn?
Thank you. I know, I'll be brief. I I'm aware of your time. But I did just want to say thank you to the public, certainly to the Chronicle, who did a lot of advertising for us. At the open house, the first open house of the cultural center, on July 27, we had approximately 156 guests come through. On the 28th, there was about 67 people coming through. And on the 29th, somewhere between 250 and 300 people. We lost count because we ran out of brochures, which had been numbered. Not everyone got a brochure. So we're sure there was over 250 people there that day. There are approximately 45 individuals who are currently renting. That does not include the Cape Verdean Museum. That was also open at different times throughout the weekend, all except for. That does not include the Cape Verdean Museum, that was also open at, um, different times throughout the weekend, all except for five vendors, uh, renters were there. We did have some renters who begin their rental agreement in August, and some were able to come in. We had demonstrations, um, we also at the same time had rented the lower section and the cafeteria. And the Buys and Burlap Marketplace was there, which was another successful event. So I can talk about the cultural center all day, but I really just wanted to let you know that it was a great success, and there was, um, honestly, I had 99% of the comments were extremely positive. Um, and one of the things that they asked is that I make sure that you all knew how grateful they were for the experience and everything you were doing. So that was coming from the public, so I did want to pass that on.
Great, thank you. I attended, the building looked incredible, the grounds looked great, I mean, staff did an amazing job getting that building ready. Don, any comments? Janelle?
Uh, I attended also, I thought it was really well put together, 500 people, that's amazing, it's really showing great support. Um, I'd like to have an agenda item again on this, Mr. Chair, if we could, to just go over some of the details. Um, I know we're gonna get our financials later on in the meeting tonight, but just, um, going forward, uh, because it, the growth has exploded. You know, I, I'm really, really happy with it, and thank you for all you do.
Julie?
Oh, I'm just really sorry I missed it, I was out of town, but, um, I'd love to see another one, sorry, Carolyn.
No, we're happy to do it. Get your own private.
All right, Larry?
I enjoyed the walkthrough, my wife enjoyed the walkthrough, she didn't spend lots of money, so it was good for me.
Great, okay, thank you, thank you. Revenue expense report for middle school building. It's nice to have you so much tonight, Carol.
Um, so for, for the year ending, uh, our fiscal year ending June 30th, 2017, um, the, the lease payments that came in from February, um, to June, to the end of June, were $27,680. Since July 1st, um, and up until the end of last week, um, they had collected another $11,110 in lease payments, for a total of 37, oh, sorry, sorry, $38,770. DPW tracks the maintenance and utilities of that building, and for FY17, the cost, um, of that $125,000 you initially set aside for it was $90,237 was spent. Um, I don't have their dollars that maybe that they've spent in July yet. Um, I certainly can, can continue to track that and update you as we move forward. I know that Carolyn would love to talk to you at some point about, um, her forward projections and that she has completed, and, uh, perhaps that'll be on your agenda.
Thank you. Carolyn, do you, Carolyn, I think we're covered on this, you want to just give us a rough projection?
And then I have a comment, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
I can give you the quick update.
Thank you.
So I'm pleased to talk about this, um, the projection going forward is that if we rent just, um, with the rentals that we have, there are 28 available activity rooms. They're all rented right now, we currently have a waitlist of nine people. The rooms are rented for at least three months, there's only one room that's only a three-month lease. The other rooms are rented for six or 12 months, with the majority of them being rented for the 12 months, the one year, which is what the board had asked me to do, or Chris. So with that in mind, we also rent the shop, which you know is the, in the basement, lower level, sorry. Um, we project that we will be bringing in $9,500 a month with just the classroom, um, space. And that does, as I said, doesn't include the library, which we have held aside, and the art room, which we are projecting to do some classes in, and charge those people individually and bring that revenue in. I think it will be a good source and a good opportunity for people who don't have space in there to be able to do some work. Um, in the library, there's a few different ideas, but maybe putting gallery space and things like that, so we'll, um, get more revenue that way as well. So I said I would be quick, but I can answer anything that you want to know.
Thank you. The, and that, just, it's important to note, that also does include the auditorium, the cafeteria, or the gymnasium.
That is, that is correct.
Gymnasium is, is, is basically full, from my understanding, Eric's got a full.
Yeah, actually, uh, that's a great lead in, Mr. Chairman, uh, we did have a meeting internally, uh, and to your point, the recreation, anytime they run a program out of there, they collect their program fees, so what it costs to do it. They don't collect anything towards the building. So what we have, uh, worked out, we have an arrangement at the, uh, community center, that when some programs are, are operated out of that, that each participant, each participant pays a $5 fee towards the building. So, uh, we had a meeting, uh, with Eric Beebe from Recreation, and I think it's on their next agenda to have a discussion. I know, I know I have it on my, uh, calendar to attend.
I believe it's the 22nd.
22nd, so I, I'll go to attend that. Uh, the one thing is that because we're introducing the fee now, that anybody that paid for like a year program, we're gonna miss out, but we'll pick it up on the next go-around. Uh, so that we will start to collect money on that side of the building, which we really have not collected anything since we've been in there, because we've just been trying to avoid the insurance issue of having it be considered a vacant building by having some programs in there. But just so the, the board's aware that that is coming.
Thank you, Chris. Carol, can you send us the, also send us that report, and we'll update it, we're gonna have this as an agenda item within the next month. As far as the expenses go, you know, I don't want to read too much into the expenses, because there's not many buildings in town that we as, as, um, assign maintenance to, DPW maintenance to the outside of the building anyway. So I really want to look at the detail of the expenses and, and point out again, the wastewater system that's tied to that, that we have to pay.
Right.
Because of the elementary schools, so expenses seem awfully high, but I don't want anyone to read into that. Janelle?
Um, so Carolyn, it seemed when I was walking around that, except for the one nonprofit, um, that is Judith Underwood's Blue Water, I think that's what it is. The rest are artists?
Hmm, most of them are, but honestly, I could run through quickly if you asked me.
I know there had been a, that summer camp initially, then they did not end up renting, am I correct on that?
That's correct.
Okay.
Right.
And then, um, yeah, that's just one of the, one of the facts I would like to know at some point. Sure. What's actually in there? You know, are they, is it just artist studios except for that one, or is there another, um, some sort of educational outlet that, like the camp or something?
There is another education, well, there's a, there is other in there, as I look through the book.
So maybe when we have our agenda item, when we're going over the details, or if you, if I can come by and just look and see, I'm just curious.
We could do some kind of grouping, because I know there's a, uh, pole dance, which is some kind of exercise program, it's not what people necessarily.
Thank you.
Lay it out to be, but, uh, and then also a, a spinning, a spinning instructor, the, uh, bicycles or, or some kind of, uh, bike activity. So there are a few that are not, and again, it, have a cultural center, we didn't want it to just be artists, so we did try to stretch. There's no one in there that's, you know, um, a, a, an obvious storefront, uh, type of, uh, operation that we really tried to avoid. We did have a few requests for that type of activity too, that we have turned down, so.
I'm just curious about the spinning, what do you, they're gonna have a spinning studio in there?
No.
Some kind of, oh, go ahead, Carolyn.
There's a gentleman who, uh, was actually a former Olympian, and he works out regularly, he's actually also a coach at the high school. Um, and he does do some training in there for himself, and he might invite a friend or two in as well, but that's why you see all the bicycles in there, because he's an avid athlete. Um, so that's what it is.
Would he consider renting the hallway?
With a locker room?
We could race him up and down the hall.
Anything else on this? All right.
Thank you.
Next up, the authorized chair and town administrator to sign addendum to engagement letter for FY16 audit for federal funds, Chris?
Yeah, just to, uh, walk people through this, uh, we have a typical audit that's done in some circumstances, when we receive more than $750,000 in federal funds. We have to do what's known as a single audit, uh, specifically for the, the federal, federal government. In our case, uh, we had, um, I know it was $3 million for the Hurricane Sandy grant on the Muddy Creek Project, and then a million dollars from Fish and Wildlife. So we more than well exceeded in that calendar, in that fiscal year, that $750,000 with those two grants alone. So we, this is an engagement letter to have the previous, uh, auditor do that work on our behalf. And that was the year that they covered, they covered FY16 in their, in their initial audit.
Thank you. Any discussion on this? Any motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve, uh, authorize the, uh, chair and town administrator to sign the addendum to engagement letter for the FY16 audit for federal funds.
Second.
Moved in seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Formation of Economic Development Committee, this has been on our goals and objectives for the last two years, um, and we haven't done it. Janelle has taken the liberty of coming up with a, uh, potential charge, and from there, with that, Janelle?
So, um, I had some civic response to the idea of an economic development committee, as well as, um, Cindy from the Chamber of Commerce, I discussed it with her a little bit. So the idea is, what is an economic development committee at the municipal level? Because we obviously have a Chamber of Commerce that is involved with, uh, private business formation and, and, um, support. So this charge I created is actually a combination of, um, the, the intent to increase municipal revenue to offset taxes, as well as, uh, a support system for the Chamber of Commerce. So you guys have read it, um, I assume, and I guess I would just like to hear your thoughts.
Larry?
Uh, thank you, Janelle, I, uh, I certainly think it's needed, you know, some years ago, we, we had economics, and it, uh, fell apart, mainly because of, uh, some personal issues, but people didn't like each other. I say that because it's not personal, like there was some legal problem, it was, you know, abrasive. Uh, my only, uh, real short, Janelle, is the first answer was, uh, increased resident and, and business tax rates, I would cross out rates, the meaningful comments are taxes.
Okay.
Because rates are, you know, depending on the housing values and so on. My more meaningful, uh, question is, I was interested in, uh, on the committee makeup of, of why the chamber is a non-voting representative, rather than, than a representative of the committee, since this is a, is a, you know, it's a joint effort. And so I was just, that, that caught my attention.
I wasn't sure if it was appropriate, so I, and also because I had the number seven, and if we let the chamber vote, now we're deadlocked at four and four, right?
We have to have odd numbers.
They have to have an odd number.
Well, change the number there, I mean, that's easy to do though, yeah, but.
Yeah, I just didn't know if it was appropriate.
Yeah.
Because I've never written a charge before.
Julie?
No, I think, thank you, Janelle, great work. Um, I'm just wondering, to what extent can we incorporate, uh, business input beyond the chamber? Can we do that, uh, in terms of trying to figure out other areas we may be lacking to help encourage?
Well, I think having the representative, and more than likely it would be Cindy, or maybe somebody else from the board, um, I think having that representative is going to bring in that voice. Um, but we as a town give the chamber money every year to, to do just this, to support and, uh, create more economic development in the business community, so I don't know if, I think it's redundant.
Okay, yeah, no, that's good, no, I, I think it's great, thank you.
Don?
I, I think it's a great, uh, first shot at this, and I appreciate all the effort that went through it. This has nothing to do specifically with, uh, this charge, but just in general, uh, I have some reservations on any ex officio things that go out into other committees, uh, exceeding a year, because you can't really guarantee that the term of the person that's gonna go in there is, from the underlying committee, is gonna last that long. And I have some real strong feelings that if, if there's an ex officio position, because the charter never contemplated them, uh, an ex officio position should probably be, uh, for a year, presuming that somebody's got a year left of their appointment on the, whatever committee it is, and probably not exceed that, because it becomes cumbersome with these staggered terms.
My thought on that was that, uh, at the reorganization, annual reorganization, that this would all come up again and again, you know? And if you count, you've got, um, one, two, three, four, um, liaisons, and it might even be the same person. Maybe there'd be somebody on the Harwich Housing Committee, for example, who also wanted to serve on this committee. Then it would be more than likely that that person would be the liaison. Um, and then you have a chair, and then you have a clerk. So my thought was, then there would just be, um, that one extra person who didn't really have a set job, you know?
In, Mr. Chair, I wasn't, through you, I wasn't really actually talking, uh, to Janelle's effort here, because I think, like I said, largely it's a really good, uh, start for this. Um, suggesting that maybe the charter committee might, might want to take a shot at how we handle ex officio appointments, so it's explicit to all committees that have them, uh, so that we can make sure that there's some uniform policy. It just gave me an opportunity to say it.
Yeah, because there are other committees that have that, have this written in there.
Chris, do you have any thoughts on this? I mean, I, I, this could be a selectmen's committee without going to be a town, town meeting vote committee.
Yeah, you, the selectmen have the ability to create ad hoc committees, I, I don't think there's an issue at all. I, I just, uh, I guess a couple suggestions, uh, you do have kind of a format that you typically use, length of terms, I, I think some of those, uh, questions, I, I think that you can have that, uh, in here, so just to kind of maintain that format that we've kind of had already. Just, just as a suggestion. And then secondly, you know, I've seen in other, in other communities that I've been in, that you can say you want people from the general public, and that you would desire, or I can't remember the exact term, uh, people that have certain skill sets. So you could ask for people that have, uh, engineering background, or a planning background, or something that goes to economic development, that it may be good to have those skills. You may not want to tie yourself that if you don't get somebody with that, then you can pick somebody else. So you, like, you don't want to necessarily have all of one type, all attorneys, or all engineers, or what have you. Uh, but there's no reason why you can't, and put that right in there, that you're looking for different skill sets. I mean, maybe having a banker on there, having an attorney, having a Realtor, uh, kind of, kind of get some blend, and then to, to maintain the, the Cape Cod feel to the committee, maybe have a few people on there that are just regular, you know, residents that care about the community. Uh, but that would be my suggestion, just to, if you want to get to that flavor, which I think is where you're headed, just to put some of those elements in.
Five members or seven? Does the board have a preference? And why seven? We have a hard time filling committees.
The reason I picked seven was because there were four other committees I thought were important to liaison with, and, um, I just thought seven would be better. If there were four representatives there, then we also needed some people from the outside who maybe weren't going to, you know, represent the other committees necessarily. But I, I feel like economic development is completely tied together with these four committees, and to not have the discussions among them is really doing the Economic Development Committee a disservice.
So can everyone send Janelle their thoughts and ideas, um, individually, and don't respond, and don't critique it, then make another shot at it, bring it back, we'll put it on the next agenda?
And also public people, too, I mean.
But important, important to, for Janelle to be able to create the outline and, uh, come back to the next meeting with it.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I do like the idea of having it as a, uh, selectmen's committee, at least initially, that gives them experience. And we can do that, with, you know, a little easier, and then it would, we could flesh out how we're going, and then we can go further if we, if we desire.
Yep, I agree. Thank you. Okay, moving on to the Housing Authority charge and discussion of meeting held on July 10th in regard to the middle school housing and CPC con, uh, conversation. Um, I did just get a, um.
Yeah, Ms., Ms. Chairman, you want me to, there was a note that was provided that.
No, I'm actually gonna respectfully decline the request, Chris, but I, but I will, um, I will keep the discussion very basic and very focused on what the original intent was. And for the audience and the people watching at home, it said, um, discussion of July 10th meeting, which it was in fact their July 25th meeting. And, um, their executive director sent me minutes, um, kind of a blind email, signed by the executive director. Apparently these minutes hadn't been voted, so they were sent out without voting, and Sally Urbana, who is the chair of that committee, wanted to make sure that that was noted. Sally Urbano, who is the chair of that committee, wanted to make sure that that was noted. The real intent of this is, if you all, and tonight you've got, and actually in the housing, Harwich Housing Committee agenda was posted on our agenda, also my mistake. But, if you look at the minutes before you tonight, which was in front of your lap, there's an agenda done by the chair of the Housing Authority, and under old business, it just says old business, and the next one says new business. And this was, struck me when I went to the, when the minutes were sent to me, because I was given minutes that said there was conversation about housing in the middle school, as well as CPC rep, and Bob McCready explained what was involved in the function of CPC. Again, these minutes have not been voted, so they are not legal minutes, but somebody, and I would suggest Julie, the liaison to the Harwich Authority, Housing Authority, should have a meeting with Sally Urbano, explain the importance of the detail in the agenda, and explain that topics not on the agenda should not be discussed in depth. And then I will bring this back for our next meeting and invite the Harwich Housing Authority to come and discuss it. The middle school conversation continues to come up. It had been brought up in the interviews for these, for the rep for the Housing Authority. It had been brought up at our joint meeting on July tenth, and then now it appears it's been brought up again. The executive body of the town voted to use the school for two years, and I'm a little concerned and confused as to why it continues to be talked about at the Housing Authority meetings. So, I think I'll close the conversation on that now and ask that Julie follow up with Sally Urbano, and then I'll bring this back next week, next meeting.
Can I also make a note on, just, so, I also have spoken with Art in terms of the new charge for the Housing Committee, so that will be coming along soon, too.
All right. Next up, committee vacancy list and discussion. The committee vacancy list is in here. I think Chris pointed out not long ago that we've done a pretty good job filling spots. One announcement that I wanted to make was, I got a series of emails from Matt Hart, and it looks like we are going to revitalize our Disability Rights Committee. Matt has offered to kind of spearhead that effort and has gotten three or four people to fill out citizens' activity forms. That is a five-member board, I believe, five-member committee. So, anyone interested in the Disability Rights Committee, please fill out a citizens' activity form in the front office, and we will be doing interviews on that.
Wednesday, we're doing some.
Wednesday, and it's not too late, because the agenda item is for that. So, if anyone gets them in, they can be added to that. Anything from any board members on this list? Larry?
No, I appreciate the Disability Rights, because that's an important committee that we actually are in violation of our state regulatory requirements by not having a committee, and I know Chris is taking that on, so I appreciate Matt stepping forward, and that's a very critical committee. I think we're, you know, we all look at this list and hope that people step forward and uh.
Dawn, anything on this?
Yeah, we have a commitment for that and actually going out if we have to, to look for people. So, I think we're making inroads of populating the boards.
I have a couple things.
Janelle?
It's not completely accurate, this, this list. Ag Commission, for instance, we have three members, and we have another one that we're interviewing on Wednesday.
So, on that, I would say, anything that you think is a discrepancy, see Sandy in the front office.
Yeah.
And she has the files, so.
So, we'll get this updated for the next meeting after we appoint who we interview on Wednesday as well.
Right.
So, to that note, too, there's some discrepancies, because we also still have some people who are chairs that are listed on the website as, with the old chairs. So, we kind of need to look at all of these lists and clean them up, because I know I'm, I want to communicate with the committees I'm liaison to, but I, in terms of ethics and in terms of all of our pieces that, as a liaison, we're acting as, but I've, you know, I've hesitated in the sense that I want to make sure I'm working from the correct listing of everything before I bother to send the communication, so I'm not sending it to inactive, you know, people no longer on that board or are not the chair. So, I think if we could get that done sooner than later, it'd be helpful.
And that also, anything that you have that you know, please tell Sandy in the office. Dawn?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We, I'm still continuing to converse with the town clerk, so, because the fundamental issue, too, is, okay, who's really there, and how many real vacancies do we have? And there are a few staggered member things that I'll apprise the chair of, you know, to agenda when we get to that point, but the objective is to get to a true listing that both the town clerk and the front office and the internet site all share together.
Yes. That's the goal. Thank you. Okay, we're on to Town Administrator's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will keep it brief due to the hour. I do have a couple things. Just obviously, number one, wish to acknowledge and appreciate the, the work and the effort that Paula Champagne has brought to the organization. It's kind of funny, I think I'll share this publicly, that, you know, I went in and I told her, I said, I was talking to her about, you know, her time, and, and she said that her husband, she had a chat with her husband, and she hit the eighty percent under the retirement. Once a person contributes enough, and you have enough age and time in service, you hit eighty percent, which is the max. And she was twenty-nine years in, and he, she went and said, well, you know, I should be able to retire now, you know, I hit my max, and he goes, what are you, a quitter? You gotta, you gotta get to thirty before you quit. So, actually, August third is thirty years, and that's where she decided to, to call it a career with us. But, thirty years in this day and age is a, a long stint within the organization, so we, we appreciate her quality effort to the organization and her time with us. Also, we did have in the package, I had a chance to go through, the department head weekly report. This is kind of the first stab, so hopefully people are somewhat satisfied with that. I thought it was actually pretty good. Tried to, you know, I had a lot of folks to keep it to one page, which I think will make it so it's not too cumbersome for them to complete. And then, just a next item I had is, we actually had about fifteen positions that we needed to fill. Some of these positions were ones that just came up fairly recently, so we're still in the internal posting stage, but out of those fifteen, we have already filled seven. So, we have almost half of them filled. So, we are making good progress as we're working our way through these, so just to let the board know. And then, we did get a letter from Will Kavanaugh from the State Agency, that we have been approved at the Army Corps of Engineers for that four-oh-eight project on the Sacre Tucket, and that was one of the last steps that we needed, so we did get that in. I think a lot, I know people made a lot of inquiries and phone calls, I know the chair, I'm sure that all that effort made a difference in the, in the final analysis. And then, lastly, I don't know if anyone else, I, I know I invested some time, went through the Barnstable County Annual Report and did have, submit that today, so, you know, I can't say I was like the first one to submit it, but we did get through it. But, it was kind of interesting reading, just to read their annual report and to see what the county does, because I certainly had a sense, but not necessarily the full scope, so the, it was kind of interesting to see, and then see better ways that we could partner up with them. But, a worthwhile effort to at least go through the annual report and see what they do, and how can we collaborate better. And that concludes my comments this evening. I, well, I do wish to say thank you to the board for their faith and confidence to extend me out to have three years, we'll get that language done and get that signed off and be off and running.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Just a comment on your, on the weekly report. I found that almost overwhelming in cases on how much the staff does, and I think that that's a very good way to showcase what they're doing for work. And I think it was very, it was very detailed, it was, it was even a learning lesson for me, and I think that the taxpayers and people in the town of Harwich will enjoy reading that in our packet. Very informative. One thing that I picked up out of there, Chris, execute contract with CDM Smith pertaining to Cole Brook. Can we please have a conversation about that?
Yes.
I think I want to make an agenda item out of anything wastewater, so that we're constantly educating people.
Yes.
So, that might not have been seen. The, the other thing that I'm going to mention that we cannot discuss is Matt Hart had sent an email that asked if we would re-send the grant, the ADA grant.
That's in process.
Okay.
That's in process.
That that hadn't been done, I wanted to make sure that we don't lose out on that opportunity.
And just, yeah, we were eligible as of August first, and it goes through, I think it's November thirtieth, and I think he wanted us to submit it August first, so we'll get it in probably the end of this week, so it will be in, but I don't think they're going to review them until November, so getting them in that much early may not be super advantageous.
Anyone driving around can recognize that there's a lot of people on the Cape, but I can't tell you how many comments that I've heard about the grounds, the roads, the shape of the town, the beaches, and our staff should really be commended. Selectmen's report, Larry?
Nothing.
Julie?
Nothing.
Janelle?
I just want to say one thing. So, I've become somewhat addicted to Words With Friends on my phone, and I was playing early this morning, and there, all of a sudden, in one of the ads was Cranberry Valley Golf Course, and I thought it was really great. I don't know if they used my location or what, but I just wanted to commend Roman or Clem, whoever decided to do that, it was really effective.
Yeah, that's Roman. You know, it's funny, I was watching the Celtics game, you know, I was following the Celtics in the playoffs, and Cranberry Valley got in on almost all those. And I asked him, I said, who was that? And he, and I think he hired a new firm, but, you know, I thought.
Very effective.
Very effective.
Yeah.
I will pass that along to you.
Dawn?
Nothing.
In the signature folder, Chris, is your contract that needs to be amended?
Yeah.
And the highway piece that needs to be amended? So, should we probably not sign?
Yeah, just don't sign those two pieces.
And then, to the board, since we don't meet for two more weeks, could you please stop in the office and sign these documents?
Yes, please.
Say, within a week?
We'll be there Wednesday.
There's some documents that need to be signed, so please don't leave. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We are adjourned.
I'm going to sign them.